Padilla, you wanted to do the presentation first. We have three council members present. We need seven more for a quorum. It's ten after ten and we're gonna lose the quorum early today. Four, Mr. Hernandez is here. We have four council members present. Thank you. We have some important business today that must get done today. I need six more council members for a quorum. Mrs. Chick is here. Mrs. Pacheco is here. Mr. Hernandez is here. I'm here. Mr. Padilla wanted to do a presentation before the business. At this rate, he won't be able to do it because we won't have time to get the business done. We also have a number of council members who want to do presentations this morning. We're going to be holding most of the presentations until after we get the business done, if we ever get a quorum. So, relax and enjoy yourselves. It looks like we'll be here. Thank you. Even though we aren't fully formally in session yet, we are gonna begin the presentations. And when we get to where we're at, we have enough formal session, then we're gonna switch it back. So, the chair recognizes Mr. Fuhr for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, members. It's my pleasure and privilege this morning to be able to present a resolution in recognition of the hard work and terrific leadership of Catherine Schick as the president of our Cultural Heritage Commission since 1997. She has been a courageous, thoughtful, deliberate thinker who has really, I think, catapulted the Cultural Heritage Commission forward, often against those substantial odds. And I think that she deserves real recognition from all of us for being willing to step into the fray and to contribute in a very meaningful way to the life of our city, to the cultural heritage of our city, and to civic improvement here in Los Angeles. And I really wanted, as she departs and goes on to other civic ventures, to have an opportunity for all of us to recognize the important contributions of Catherine Schick. Catherine, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I thank you very much. It was fantastic three years, at times very hard, but I enjoyed every minute of it and I will miss it. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla for a presentation.
If there's one brief presentation that can go before, we have about five minutes before one of the final people get here.
Mrs. Chick, would you like to do your presentation? Is she here now?
Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez is here and he would like to do a presentation. Well, I have one too.
Members of the council, today I have the pleasure of recognizing pretty much an internationally acclaimed artist, Potenza. She's standing here to my left. And the reason I'm recognizing her is she basically has dedicated herself in terms of creating a dominant theme of a healing heart. And basically, she started dealing with this because of our recovery from not only civil unrest, fires, earthquakes, floods that we experienced in the 90s. It depicts a heart being repaired by a golden needle and thread for overcoming the social problems and natural disasters. The heart contains many facets reflecting the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. The painting's background compromises of stars and stripes in the colors of red, white, and blue. All elements of the American flag emerging from the American flag is a purple heart, symbolizing heroism and acknowledging the spirit of the people of Los Angeles in the face of adversity. Although the painting was inspired by and dedicated to the people of Los Angeles, it reflects concerns facing individuals all across the United States and around the world. Potenza continues to exhibit the project "The Hearts of the World" internationally, making presentations to many world leaders, including Archbishop Desmond Tutu, His Holiness the Dalai Lama. And the project basically consists of painting each country of the world and turning elements and colors of their respective flags into a heart and recognizing the hearts of its people. I had to read that because that was part of the script. I just wanted each and every one of you to know that when she contacted our office and we basically saw the heart of Los Angeles on many occasions, I've talked about the heart of Los Angeles. And today's kind of symbolizes a very important day for Los Angeles because we're dealing with the issues of the potentials of the DNC. And I think in doing that, we forget about the hearts of Angelenos and the fact that we have dealt with diversity in the past and the fact that we have different opinions and that we tend to survive. And very few people are willing to recognize that Los Angeles... I share with people, I got elected August, or it's June, in August 27, 1991. And in December, we had what we called the worst floods in the history of the city. In May, we had what we called the worst civil unrest, the riots, because of the Rodney King verdict. And then two years later, we had the Northridge earthquake. And in the year 2000, we're celebrating. We're showcasing our city. And that kind of recovery did not happen simply because of politicians. I think that recovery happened because of the work of the people of the city of Los Angeles. And with that, I'd like to introduce to everybody an international artist who basically tries to heal through her work and again, is donating to the city, the heart of Los Angeles. It'll be displayed on the fourth floor. Potenza.
Thank you very much. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to be here to present this heart of Los Angeles and this American heart. Many years ago, and this is a perfect opportunity to tell you this, but many years ago, there was a military event that took place. And I asked myself, can one person actually make a difference? Can one person do anything to make a dent in our social problems nationally and internationally? And so, I painted a 360-foot painting based on what do I do? What do I do? What can I do to make a difference? And so, as an artist, I painted again a 360-foot painting and other projects. But then, my pet project became "The Hearts of the World." I paint a painting based on the flag of each country of the world. I've done 85. Fifty-one of them were at the United Nations 50th anniversary. And I'm presenting these hearts to each and every leader of the world. As Mr. Hernandez said, I presented to the Dalai Lama, His Holiness the Dalai Lama, Archbishop Tutu, the president of El Salvador, and many world leaders. And amidst the hearts of the world is this heart of Los Angeles. And again, I want to point out that this is about a healing heart. And as you can see, it is a healing heart. And again, as Mr. Hernandez said, we are now celebrating. So, I'm grateful to be here and what a place to have the Democratic National Committee. Thank you very much.
And I have a certificate.
We also have a "Heart of Los Angeles" certificate. We're gonna give Potenza, but today I just thought I'd recognize you with our happiness is the presentation of "The Heart of Los Angeles" painted by Potenza to the city of Los Angeles. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, we now have a quorum. Please call the roll, Mr. Fuhr.
First, Mrs. Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Causi, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, Farrel, ten members present and quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Just so we're clear on the record here, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, August 11, 2000. We're being viewed on city cable television, channel 35, and also available by council phone every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at sometime after 10 o'clock. And rerun, we rerun in the evening and again on the weekends. We do have a quorum and we are actually now in a position to get some of our business over with. Mr. Padilla has asked to delay the business in order to get his presentation in. Are they all here now? Are we ready to go? Do it.
Thank you very much, Madam President, colleagues. It's a pleasure to be here recognizing the tour and the basic, another example of how the Latino community is evolving and contributing and still being a great part of the American fabric is the fact that rock and Espanol is one of the largest growing segments of the music industry. So, for me, it's a great pleasure to be here with Councilman Padilla and all the groups mentioned. Thank you.
Mr. President, members, it's my pleasure and privilege this morning to be able to present a resolution in recognition of the hard work and terrific leadership of Catherine Schick as the president of our Cultural Heritage Commission since 1997. She has been a courageous, thoughtful, deliberate thinker who has really, I think, catapulted the Cultural Heritage Commission forward, often against those substantial odds. And I think that she deserves real recognition from all of us for being willing to step into the fray and to contribute in a very meaningful way to the life of our city, to the cultural heritage of our city, and to civic improvement here in Los Angeles. And I really wanted, as she departs and goes on to other civic ventures, to have an opportunity for all of us to recognize the important contributions of Catherine Schick. Catherine, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I thank you very much. It was fantastic three years, at times very hard, but I enjoyed every minute of it and I will miss it. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla for a presentation.
If there's one brief presentation that can go before, we have about five minutes before one of the final people get here.
Mrs. Chick, would you like to do your presentation? Is she here now?
Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez is here and he would like to do a presentation. Well, I have one too.
Members of the council, today I have the pleasure of recognizing pretty much an internationally acclaimed artist, Potenza. She's standing here to my left. And the reason I'm recognizing her is she basically has dedicated herself in terms of creating a dominant theme of a healing heart. And basically, she started dealing with this because of our recovery from not only civil unrest, fires, earthquakes, floods that we experienced in the 90s. It depicts a heart being repaired by a golden needle and thread for overcoming the social problems and natural disasters. The heart contains many facets reflecting the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. The painting's background compromises of stars and stripes in the colors of red, white, and blue. All elements of the American flag emerging from the American flag is a purple heart, symbolizing heroism and acknowledging the spirit of the people of Los Angeles in the face of adversity. Although the painting was inspired by and dedicated to the people of Los Angeles, it reflects concerns facing individuals all across the United States and around the world. Potenza continues to exhibit the project "The Hearts of the World" internationally, making presentations to many world leaders, including Archbishop Desmond Tutu, His Holiness the Dalai Lama. And the project basically consists of painting each country of the world and turning elements and colors of their respective flags into a heart and recognizing the hearts of its people. I had to read that because that was part of the script. I just wanted each and every one of you to know that when she contacted our office and we basically saw the heart of Los Angeles, on many occasions, I've talked about the heart of Los Angeles. And today's kind of symbolizes a very important day for Los Angeles because we're dealing with the issues of the potentials of the DNC. And I think in doing that, we forget about the hearts of Angelenos and the fact that we have dealt with diversity in the past and the fact that we have different opinions and that we tend to survive. And very few people are willing to recognize that Los Angeles... I share with people, I got elected August, or it's June, in August 27, 1991. And in December, we had what we called the worst floods in the history of the city. In May, we had what we called the worst civil unrest, the riots, because of the Rodney King verdict. And then, two years later, we had the Northridge earthquake. And in the year 2000, we're celebrating. We're showcasing our city. And that kind of recovery did not happen simply because of politicians. I think that recovery happened because of the work of the people of the city of Los Angeles. And with that, I'd like to introduce to everybody an international artist who basically tries to heal through her work and again, is donating to the city, the heart of Los Angeles. It'll be displayed on the fourth floor. Potenza.
Thank you very much. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to be here to present this heart of Los Angeles and this American heart. Many years ago, and this is a perfect opportunity to tell you this, but many years ago, there was a military event that took place. And I asked myself, can one person actually make a difference? Can one person do anything to make a dent in our social problems nationally and internationally? And so, I painted a 360-foot painting based on what do I do? What do I do? What can I do to make a difference? And so, as an artist, I painted again a 360-foot painting and other projects. But then, my pet project became "The Hearts of the World." I paint a painting based on the flag of each country of the world. I've done 85. Fifty-one of them were at the United Nations 50th anniversary. And I'm presenting these hearts to each and every leader of the world. As Mr. Hernandez said, I presented to the Dalai Lama, His Holiness the Dalai Lama, Archbishop Tutu, the president of El Salvador, and many world leaders. And amidst the hearts of the world is this heart of Los Angeles. And again, I want to point out that this is about a healing heart. And as you can see, it is a healing heart. And again, as Mr. Hernandez said, we are now celebrating. So, I'm grateful to be here and what a place to have the Democratic National Committee. Thank you very much.
And I have a certificate. We also have a "Heart of Los Angeles" certificate. We're gonna give Potenza, but today I just thought I'd recognize you with our happiness is the presentation of "The Heart of Los Angeles" painted by Potenza to the city of Los Angeles. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we now have a quorum. Please call the roll, Mr. Fuhr.
First, Mrs. Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Causi, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, Farrel, ten members present and quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Just so we're clear on the record here, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, August 11, 2000. We're being viewed on city cable television, channel 35, and also available by council phone every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at sometime after 10 o'clock. And rerun, we rerun in the evening and again on the weekends. We do have a quorum and we are actually now in a position to get some of our business over with. Mr. Padilla has asked to delay the business in order to get his presentation in. Are they all here now? Are we ready to go? Do it.
Thank you very much, Madam President, colleagues, for your patience. I was actually hoping for a little theme music because we have a celebration here this morning. Councilmember Hernandez and Pacheco are gonna be joining me as we declare today, Friday, August 11, in the year 2000, officially Rock en Espanol Day in the city of Los Angeles. Specifically, this weekend, as we celebrate the arrival of the Democratic National Convention, we're also celebrating Watcha Tour 2000, which is the second Rock en Espanol tour in the country, and it's gonna be playing to a sold-out crowd, I'm sure, at the Universal Amphitheater here in Los Angeles. For some of you who may not be familiar, Rock en Espanol is actually the fastest-growing musical genre in the United States at this point in time. And the tour brings us the following groups: Molotov and Cafeta Cuba from the country of Mexico, Terceopelados from Colombia, Los Ananitos Verdes from Argentina, plus Los Angeles' very own Oso Matli, who are probably the most talked-about local bands since Los Lobos. In addition to them, some up-and-coming groups, Riesgo de Contagio and Resorte, who are also from Mexico. And at this point in time, before bringing up some of the tour organizers to speak, I wanted to ask both my colleagues, Councilmember Hernandez and Pacheco, to also say a few words.
Good morning, Madam President, colleagues. It's a pleasure to be here recognizing the tour and the basic, another example of how the Latino community is evolving and contributing and still being a great part of the American fabric is the fact that rock and Espanol is one of the largest-growing segments of the music industry. So, for me, it's a great pleasure to be here with Councilman Padilla and all the groups mentioned. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, I need to share with you that I haven't been to a Rock en Espanol concert, but I think my council colleague Padilla has. And what I want to share with everybody is that I know that in my council district, there have been several venues that were used for Rock en Espanol over the last five years, and it was something that was emerging. They were using wherever they could get halls to do it, and they always generated thousands of young people who wanted to participate in this phenomenon, participating in Spanish rock. And the reality is, as the groups have mainstreamed and continued to grow, it's now something that we can go see at the amphitheater. And I think Rock en Espanol is the fastest-growing, again, form of entertainment that we have going. Young people are participating. I'm looking forward to rocking the vote with Rock en Espanol and making sure that we promote the positive aspect of it. And again, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Padilla, for allowing me to say a few words on their behalf.
Thank you, colleagues. And I failed to mention one of the groups, which is actually a special treat here for opening night from Argentina, the group Animal. You know, Rock en Espanol, like a few other musical genres that have really catapulted in recent years, believe it or not, received its catapult here in Los Angeles. Its musical forms that may originate in other countries and gain a certain amount of popularity, but it's not until they reach a large level of success here in Los Angeles, in the United States, that it travels back culturally to the country of origin and gains even more momentum. I think it speaks volumes of the city of Los Angeles, what it is today, our diversity, and again, the contributions that we make, not just to the business community, but to art and culture, not only in the city and in this country, but around the world. And to speak to the social consciousness of it, I know a certain percentage of the proceeds are actually going to the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. And to speak more to that, the event organizers, I'd like to call forward. First, Kevin Lyman and Jorge Mondragon, as well as Daryl Eaton and Gus Gardenas to share a few words and speak more to the tour. But before we do that, I see Councilmember Goldberg.
Well, I just wanted to remind all of you that Oso Matli began in Echo Park. And that those of us who are lifelong Echo Parkians are really overjoyed at their wonderful success, and we wish this tour also, with all of the groups, a great deal of success.
Okay. Kevin?
Kevin actually couldn't be with us today. He's actually at the amphitheater setting up the stuff. He's gotta do the grunt work. Yeah, exactly. But on behalf of the bands, all the managers, the labels, we want to thank the city of Los Angeles for recognizing this. I think it's a big moment for the whole Rock en Espanol scene, and we really appreciate you recognizing the hard work that we put forth to trying to make this a wider scene for everybody.
I just wanna say that it's an honor that make everybody think that the very important thing is the music, no matter the language, no matter if it's in Spanish, it's in Italian, it's in German, the important thing is the music. And the music can make us be more closer, be more friends, and that's the important thing. And as my partner said, it's one wall, it's one music, only many languages. Thank you very much.
Buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Gus Gardenas. I'm senior vice president for HACU, Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. And on behalf of our 250 colleges and universities throughout the United States and Puerto Rico, and on behalf of all our staff in San Antonio, and especially in behalf of, I want to thank Coors Light Beer for taking the first initial step to work with us in behalf of the educating the most important resource, our people. And I can say to you is that without your assistance, without the support, and without the help of major corporations such as Coors Light Beer, we could not do it. And so, again, muchas gracias, and we look forward to a very successful 18 tours throughout the country with this great music. Gracias.
Aloha. En nombre, in the name of Molotov, wanna, I'd like to say, thank you all for this Watcha Tour. Gracias, eh? Chidoles.
That was Tito from Molotov saying thank you, and I think we're about to be entertained.
Let you take it over. You sing better than I do.
We want to say thank you to all the people in the USA, and we will sing some... Me quieren agitar, me instan a gritar. Soy como una roca, palabras no me tocan. Adentro hay un volcán, que pronto va a estallar. Soy como un lamento, lamento boliviano que un día empezó y no va a terminar. Ya nadie hace daño. Oh. Yoyoyoy. Yeah. Y yo estoy aquí borracho y loco. Y mi corazón idiota siempre brillará. Y yo te amaré, te amaré por siempre. Nena, no te peines en la cama, que los viajantes se van a trazar. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. The home of rock and roll is now the home of Rock en Espanol. This is a certificate declaring today, please join me, Rock en Espanol Day in the City of Los Angeles. Gracias. Of course. Thank you very much.
Mr. Padilla, you might want to take the whole group in the back and do a formal one with the City Hall backdrop, so we can go on with our council business here. All right, we are now going to try to move the agenda. Mr. Savornic, you had a request?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to request, Madam President, that at this time, we postpone, just for a moment, any further presentations because we have a—
No, with all the rest of the presentations will come after the business. We're doing the regular business. We also have a special meeting as well.
Thank you. I would like to move that we proceed with the special meeting in which we can discuss item number one, which is the Maersk Sealand Agreement at the Port of Los Angeles. And once we are able to take up that item, Madam President, I'd like to be recognized.
All right. All right.
I was going to move that we have a little bit more of that music, Madam President.
Yeah, well, Mr. Ridley Thomas, we can have lots more of it after we finish the business.
All right.
If they can stick around, we can have a lot more of it.
No promises.
All right. If there's no objection, we're going to recess the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
First in check, Fuhrer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Causi, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, Farrel, 13 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, we have just one item on this agenda. We have some representatives of the Port of Los Angeles here, in case anybody has any questions. Mr. Savornic, did you want to be recognized?
Thank you, Madam President, Members of the Council. This item before us is one of the most, if not the most significant accomplishments in recent memory at the Port of Los Angeles. Last October, the Port and Maersk Sealand signed a memorandum of understanding signifying Maersk's initial commitment to Pier 400 container terminal. At that time, we celebrated a new partnership and Maersk investment in Los Angeles. Today, we have that agreement before us. It is a 25-year effective April 30, 2002 agreement, which will bring $2 billion in revenue to the Port of Los Angeles. It is a 484-acre facility. It is the largest proprietary container facility in the world. It will also include a 39.39-acre intermodal rail yard. And as you all well are aware, Maersk is the world's largest shipping line. I would like to commend some individuals who worked very hard to bring this to us today. Among those with us at the center table is Harbor Commission Acting President John Thomas, Commissioner Carol Rowan, the Vice President, the Executive Director Larry Keller, and one of the individuals who played a significant role in bringing Maersk to the table and consummating the deal was Commissioner Ted Stein, who could not be with us here today. I would like to go and also acknowledge Stacy Jones, the Chief Harbor Engineer, Lou Coletta, the Director of Finance, Kathy Vale, the Assistant City Attorney, Al Firestein, the Director of Business Development, Bruce Seton, the Chief Operating Officer, and all the members here from the Port of Los Angeles negotiating team, and our partners representing Maersk, who have brought this significant, if not the most significant, project to the City of Los Angeles. With that, Madam President, Members of the Council, I would like to move approval on special agenda item number one. All of the concerns that have been historic concerns of this council, including living wage and other issues, have been addressed. A memorandum of understanding in regards to that particular issue has been consummated by the Port and Maersk, and I would like to offer my heartiest congratulations to the Port staff and the commission for this truly phenomenal day in the City of Los Angeles, and would move approval.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I would just like to add, Members of the Council, this is a really big deal. This is a really big deal. It's probably the biggest deal we've done, actually, and it's something that we can't say enough about. What we need to do is get the show on the road, or the boat in the water, as it were. And there being no one else who wants to be heard, open the roll on item one, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is unanimously approved. Congratulations. Thank you all for your hard work.
Fourth with, Madam President.
Fourth with on that item. The fourth-er wither, the better. Mr. Thomas.
Who's all on that group line?
Excuse me?
Those names of people that we just approved?
Names of people we just approved? We approved the Maersk contract with the largest shipping company in the world. That's what we approved.
Chicken? That's not the fish deal like they had in Sacramento before.
No, no, we ship everything.
And will this, did they mention—
And the debate is over, so is the vote.
They mentioned about Ted Stein's contribution?
Yes, they did.
Oh, okay, well.
All right. Mr. Thomas, did you want to say anything, or could we adjourn the meeting?
I would just like to thank you, Members of the Council, for passing this. This is indeed a watershed day for the City of Los Angeles and for the Port of Los Angeles. The Port, as you know, in recent years has been humming on all cylinders. We are now the largest container port in the United States. We have had, in the past six years, roughly $1 billion of capital construction to facilitate us becoming the largest container port, and with this, we'll put the title of number one so far out of reach that we will be there for many, many years to come. Want to congratulate all the members of our staff, led by Larry Keller, Al Firestein, and all of those who've been mentioned, Kathy Vale, I think they're all standing behind us here, Kathy Vale, Stacy Jones, Lou Coletta, Brian Dorney, and Bruce Seton, a large gentleman on the your left, who just completed 30 years of continuous work for the City of Los Angeles down at the Port. And what was it, did Bruce 20 years without a sick day? Is that correct? Which, these days, is something quite extraordinary. I want to give the microphone over to Commissioner Carol Rowan, who played an integral part in these negotiations, for a couple of comments, and then to Mr. Keller. Carol.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I can't thank you enough for your swift approval. I really didn't have any trepidations that you would approve it, but this has been two years in the making, two years of intense staff work. I cannot tell you the numbers of hours that our staff has spent on this. It was a formidable challenge. They overcame every obstacle, every objection, and you have every right to be proud of the staff of the Port of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Councilmembers, I too would like to thank you for your approval. It's an affirmation of a lot of good work that's gone on by the team that you see standing behind us. We're absolutely becoming the number-one port with the number-one client in the world, in the number-one city in the world, and I think it's fitting and it's right, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
And to the Maersk company.
Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes the special meeting, which is now adjourned, and we'll return to the regular meeting and start the business. Let's go through the agenda.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Also approved.
Item number six on the regular agenda, request that that matter be continued until September 6.
Without objection, that will be continued.
Item 39, request that that matter be continued by Councilmember Fuhrer until September 12.
If there's no problem with that, that will be continued to September 12. 39.
Item number 39. Item number five, request from the Building and Safety Department that this matter be received and filed. Item number five.
Without, anybody have any problem with that? Item five is now received and filed.
And item number 11, a request by Councilmember Fuhrer that this matter be withdrawn from the agenda and referred to Budget and Finance Committee.
Without objection, that will be referred to Budget and Finance.
That was item number 11. Item number 20 on the regular agenda is the mayor's reappointment of Robert Byer to the City Employees Retirement Board.
Mr. Byer. Members of the council, item 20. Anybody wish to be heard? In that case, open the roll, close the roll. 20. It's a reappointment. You know, if you sit down there and read your agenda, you'll be able to tell. And also, the clerk announced it. This is Mr. Robert Byer, and this is a reappointment. It's all carefully explained, so that everybody has 72 hours' advance notice, as required by the Brown Act. Item 20, to the City Employees Retirement System. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Byer, congratulations, I guess.
Thank you.
And thank you for your continued service. Next item. Fourth with on that.
Item number 21 is the mayor's appointment of Rick Caruso to the Board of Harbor Commissioners.
Anybody wish to be heard on item 21? Mr. Caruso is out of town. He informed us about a week ago that he, actually, originally, he asked to have his confirmation hearing come up in September, but because, it turns out, the window closes before then, and at the request of a number of council members, I've scheduled it, even though he had informed us that he could not be here. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, for the record, with this appointment, there will be three appointees on this commission from CD 11. One from CD 15, and one from CD 9.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, from my point of view, the removal of a commissioner for reasons having to do with what candidate they support in a political election is, or ought to be unlawful, but it certainly isn't in this case, and because of that, I will not support any nominee for the position to replace that position, even though I was, frankly, no fan of the person in the first place. It's the, has nothing to do with personalities, is what I'm saying. It has to do with process, and I don't think the process is appropriate.
Okay, open the roll on item 21. Mr. Holden.
There was an editorial in one of the local newspapers, and they were saying that when situations like this occur, that the council should demonstrate some independence. Now, we work with both branches of government, I mean, the executive branch, legislative branch, legal branch, Jimmy, who'll be our next mayor. But I must tell you that we have to show, even though the charter change has been made, that, and many of you supported a charter, which gives you absolutely no power and authority relates to these appointments. The only time you can exercise some independence, as the article did so state, is that in a time like this. So after having said that, I'm going to sit down and vote.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, Members of the council, I have no problems with the current nominee to the position of the Harbor Commissioners. However, in my own mind, I've basically decided that I was going to start trying to push for policies that abide by more geographic representation of commissioners. And one of those policies clearly tells me that if I have more than two appointees from one council district, I'll be voting no. And so I just want the record to state that my reasons for voting no on this particular appointee will be because he will be the third member from CD 11 to sit on that commission. And CD 11 is not lacking in council commission appointees. I think that even though Mr. Caruso sat on another board, so they would be losing that one, coming on this board, it still leaves him at 57, and I'm still dealing with my 13 now.
All right, if there's nobody else, I would just like to say for the record that I did not support the charter, and I do support Mr. Caruso. Open the roll, close the roll. Nope, no, it's not. What happened to it? It worked a few minutes ago. Try it again. Open the roll. Nope. All right, you'll have to do it orally. There it is. Okay, now, as if all of you who voted no had a chance to do that. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, six noes.
All right, so that is not approved, and it'll carry over until the next meeting, Tuesday's meeting. Next item.
Item number 40 is the mayor's appointment of Marvin Jackson to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
Item 40. Mr. Jackson, are you here? Come, have a seat. Members of the council, item 40. Anybody wish to be heard? Ms. Chick.
Yes, colleagues, I've met with Mr. Jackson in my office, and he came to a meeting of the Governmental Efficiency Committee. The three members of that committee were present. We discussed a variety of issues with Mr. Jackson. I think he's quite eager to join the commission and to improve on its work with the community and in shaping the plan, and I would ask for your support in this nomination. Thank you.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, Members of the council, I rise to support the recommendation of the committee. Mr. Jackson is a resident of the community of Limerick Park. He is the president of Crenshaw Neighbors, a longstanding community organization comprised of homeowner associations, block clubs, business interests. He serves in the capacity of Chair of the African-American Chamber of Commerce Subcommittee relating to these specific kinds of issues. It seems to me that he represents what most of us had in mind when we talked about a Board of Commissioners that would oversee the process of implementation of neighborhood councils. I rise simply to indicate that and to commend him as one who is well-suited to serve in the capacity of a commissioner on this particular commission.
Mrs. Walters? No. All right, your name was here and then it vanished. All right, open the roll on Mr. Jackson's appointment, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is unanimously approved. Thank you for your service, Mr. Jackson. You're confirmed. Fourth with on that.
Thank you very much. Item number 41 is the mayor's appointment of Rob Glushon to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
Next, Mr. Glushon. Okay, item 41, Mr. Glushon's appointment. Any council members wish to comment? In that case, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That is approved. Thank you for your service. Welcome aboard, and fourth with on that item as well. Next item.
Item number 42 is a Housing and Community Redevelopment Report submitted without recommendation regarding the mayor's appointment of Patrick Kelly to the L.A. Homeless Services Authority.
We do have one gentleman who's asked to be heard, Mr. Leon Wood.
My name is Reverend Leon Wood. I'm the current Chair of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, and I'd like to speak in favor of Mr. Kelly being approved. He has served as a very vital and active member. He's had quite a few absences this past year because of his commitment with another commission, but he has rearranged his time. commission, but he has rearranged his time so that he could be with us in the future. But I can -- I'm here to say that the times that he has been with us on some very key matters, he has given us some very valuable and vital support, and his professional understanding has been of great assistance to me. Mr. Kelly would be here today, except he's in Europe, out of the country right now on business, and -- but he has rearranged his schedule so that he could be, in the coming year, more attentive to the needs of the Homelessness Services Authority. I'm open for any questions that you might have, and the acting executive director is here with me, Mrs. Robin Connerly, if there's any questions that you might have, ma'am.
Thank you, Reverend Wood. Let's find out. We'll just stick around. We'll officially close the public hearing and start in with the council members, and if they have questions, I know they will ask you. Mr. Pacheco is first.
Madam President, colleagues, I was simply going to articulate some of the same sentiments that the chair of the commission had said personally, so I would just simply move approval based on the new information we have this morning, as opposed to Wednesday, that he has rearranged his schedule to make himself more available for the commission, and he's done good work, and that the reverend, who is the chair of the commission, would like us to move approval and support Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, and again, I think at the last meeting, we talked about at length about the attendance situation, and I think that's been resolved, because Mr. Kelly had an appointment to also judicial review committee that he no longer -- or has been rescheduled to allow him to participate more with LASSA. And members, as someone who is real involved with the development of the agreement between the county and the city and the development of LASSA, you need to know that my office stays in touch with the commission proceedings, and my understanding is that Mr. Kelly has brought a very important balance to that particular commission, and that his participation has been extremely important in terms of the representation of some of the issues that have gone before the board, and I would just ask that that balance continue and that we allow him to continue to serve as a commissioner.
Mrs. Walters.
If Mr. Kelly could rearrange his schedule in face of not being reappointed, why couldn't he rearrange his schedule to attend some of the meetings? I understand that he's been absent at sixty-seven percent of the meetings. This is an important commission, and I question, when it was formed, whether or not it had people on there that were sensitive to the homeless problem and would be willing to put in the time and effort to work with this problem. And so, I am very reluctant to vote for anybody on the commission that has missed sixty-seven percent of the meetings and cannot be before the council to add his reconfirmation, to answer questions for himself. This gentleman, it seems to me, needs to answer some questions to the council members and not through an intermediary. And on another issue, I might say, is Robin Connerly with you?
Yes.
And you're here? I need to speak with you both on another matter before you leave here, so as soon as you can, come to the rope. All right? So, my vote's going to be no on this gentleman.
All right, I think, in fairness, we should note that he was here the other day when this matter first came up. Mr. Ridley Thomas? No, he wasn't?
No, I was.
Not the guy who was here? All right. Mr. Ridley Thomas, you're up next.
Madam President, I rise simply to restate the concerns that I raised at the meeting on Wednesday. Had the person in question been here, it might have had an impact. I understand that there were circumstances that prevented him from being here, perhaps similar circumstances that result in a attendance record of some thirty-three percent. Some members have indicated to me, Ridley Thomas, he's one of the guys that is helpful. I wish to say that though we may share a common frame of reference, "may" I wish to underscore, it's critically important to appreciate that that effectiveness is substantially minimized if those who occupy a different point of view are there with frequency and have the opportunity to outvote, outmaneuver those who may share a common frame of reference. The additional point that I wish to make, the preponderance of appointees not being accurate, is what concerns me, what would concern me. If there were persons who more accurately represented the spread of this city, particularly in those areas where homelessness is most acute, this could be acceptable. Otherwise, I simply state or restate the position that I articulated on Wednesday.
Mr. Hernandez.
You know, Madam Chair, sometimes it's a question of the quality of the representation. I'm just taken aback right now, because we just took a vote on a previous commissioner, and one of us chose not to participate in that vote, basically chose to walk out of the room, at the same time made a comment. I need us to understand, and what I've been trying to say, is there have been key meetings when Mr. Kelly had to be there, and he was there, and there were meetings when he wasn't there because of a conflict in terms of a judicial review process. He did bother to get back to us and share with us that that conflict no longer exists, and he wants to participate on this board, knowing that we've been questioning his attendance. And it's the quality, again, of the decision that I'm trying to enforce. Now, we can claim to be real concerned about the issue of attendance. I'm trying to say, I'm real concerned about the issue of homelessness, and I basically have taken the time to basically be monitoring some of those meetings and deal with the issue. And I'm just talking about a quality person that I think makes a difference on that board, who has now made a commitment to try and be there more often, and has basically given up another commitment to do that. Now, again, if we don't want to take that kind of work into consideration in our decision, each one of us get to make those decisions.
All right, if there's nobody else, the item is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that item, please. Next item.
Item number eight on the regular agenda is the appointment of Antoinette Cristoval to the Director of Finance position.
And we have two items here, the approval of the appointment, and the -- that's item A, and item B is the recommended salary level, as approved by the EERC. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I simply wanted to rise to move the permanent appointment of Ms. Cristoval. We've had an opportunity to meet and confer both privately and in the Budget and Finance Committee, and she comes highly recommended and offers a number of important skills to the city. We're lucky to have her. I urge unanimous support for her appointment.
Are you moving then A and B?
Yes.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Holden. Over there.
Who's recommending your appointment?
Yes, that's correct. I think he's the only mayor we have at the moment.
Right. You know, when you do good, you got to commend. When you do bad, like some of these other appointments that we voted no on, got to vote no. I just wanted -- I interviewed you in my office, and I want to say that you got a score of one hundred. You can't do any better than that. I tried to give you a hundred-and-ten, but you got a hundred.
Thank you so much.
And I want the community to know that you're well-qualified, excellent selection, and the man must be commended for having gone through all the people who were applying for this job and selected the best qualified candidate. I'm going to vote for you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Well, I guess everyone's going to vote for you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Welcome aboard. You are now hired. Or at least you will be when they fill out the paperwork. All right, forthwith on that one, please. And that was, just so we're clear, that was A and B. Next item.
Next on the agenda are items which are noted for public hearings, items one through four and seven.
All right, I do not have any cards on items one through four or seven. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to be heard on one of those items, let us know now. Excuse me? Yes? What'd you --
We have some people here on the bench who are very busy, and they, you know, we should give them the same respect as we did the others to present their certificate of commendation.
Mr. Holden, we went all through this earlier today. You weren't here at the time we went all through this. The -- so --
Well, you did presentation, but I came in while you were doing presentation.
No, Mr. Holden, before we were doing -- we went through this before, and the reason we are doing it this way is in an effort to get the meeting done while we have a quorum here, and you're delaying the meeting. So, if we can finish off the agenda without undue wasted time, we'll be done in plenty of time.
You're saying some members are leaving early?
Yes, I am.
And they're being paid?
And they've actually --
Okay.
Mr. Holden, you leave early all the time, but I don't usually announce it in public.
We can deduct that from their pay.
Yeah, well, all right, we'll go back over the last month. But if you are through now, we could go on with the agenda. I don't have any cards on items one through four or seven. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to be heard on those items, now is your moment. And seeing none, the public hearings are closed on those items. Members of the council, do you have any specials? If not, open the roll on items one through four and seven. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items nine through nineteen on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right.
A motion is required on item number nine, and as much as there are two reports on one file.
All right, and Mr. Hernandez, I see you wish to be --
I'll move, excuse me, I'll move B.
Nine B. All right, so we have -- anybody call -- have any specials?
And then I'd like to call item fifteen special.
All right, Mr. Hernandez calls item fifteen special. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, the city attorney has asked that we make a slight change in the language on nineteen A. I don't think it really changes the whole purpose or goal of it, but I'd just like to say it's on your desk, and I'd like to move nineteen A with nineteen.
All right, so nineteen A. All right, so items nine through -- where are we? Nine through --
Nine through nineteen, with the exception of eleven, fifteen, and nineteen is amended.
Now, nineteen A, we're going to do nineteen as amended.
As amended.
Okay, open the roll, close -- hold on, Mrs. Walters. Mrs. Walters calls sixteen special. All right, items nine through nineteen, except for -- nineteen as amended, except for eleven, fifteen, and sixteen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next, forthwith on thirteen. We're not up to thirty-three yet. Hold on.
Moving right along here.
Next item.
Items number twenty-two through thirty-eight on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. That's twenty-two through thirty-eight.
We have a card on twenty-seven, so we'll call that special. We have a card on thirty, so we'll call that special, and what are you bringing me in here now?
This is special one.
Is that the special meeting? Item one on the special meeting, or is there another special? Let me see.
Motion. I think that's --
If it was the special meeting -- somebody will go check. If it was the special meeting, we've already done it. All right, so we have items twenty --
Twenty-two through thirty-eight, with the exception of, I believe, the councilmember Padilla wishes to call item twenty-five special. There's a card --
Is that correct?
Special. There's an amendment to formally take a position on state legislation.
Twenty-five, never mind, we've called it special. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And how far are we going?
Thirty-one through thirty-eight.
Thirty-one through thirty-eight. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Now forthwith on thirty-three? Three, yes, now.
This is special one.
It was a special one, all right. I don't know what special one is. We'll find out in a minute. All right, moving right along.
I would like to mention there was item twenty-nine C. That was the amended motion that was on the desk, and so that last vote included item twenty-nine C.
Would be twenty-nine C, yes. Correct. Okay. I see us nearing the end here. Or am I missing something?
Would you care to take the special items, or would you like to now do special one?
Now, where is special one? What is special one? Let's do special. Well, special one, we have a --
Special one is a Goldberg-Missakowsky motion.
Agreed, Mr. Fuhr.
Findings need to be made by the city attorney.
All right, well, now, let's see how far we can get on the regular agenda, and then let's get to this, because most of these, we just -- we called special because we had cards.
Item number fifteen called special by councilmember Hernandez.
All right, hold item fifteen. Mr. Hernandez isn't here right this minute.
Item number fifteen.
Item sixteen was -- fifteen, he's out of the room. We're holding that on the desk. We're moving fast here. Item sixteen, Mrs. Walters, called special.
Madam Chair, I understand that what this vote will do today on this item is allow the developers to apply, get started on the application for the bonds, but I understand it's to go back to committee on the issue of affordability, and I want to indicate my support for maintaining affordability here in this building. The building was constructed with city dollars, with public money, and it should remain in the affordable category.
So, just so I'm clear, that means if we approve this, you're okay with approving it as it stands on the --
It's okay to approve it as it stands, but I just want everybody to understand that I support the action going back to committee on the issue of affordability.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg.
Actually, we did change the recommendation, so what you are actually voting on is the thirty-year affordability. It was going to be ten, I think. I can't remember. Ten more, the chair will remember. Remember, we added the number of years to make it thirty years.
It was going to be fifteen, and the most significant factor is that everyone anticipates that in fifteen years, all the surrounding development of Staples is going to be fully completed, and we didn't want to push out these tenants as the market went up around them, and so we moved for a thirty-year time for the covenant, and we did inform the developers and the owners that --
At the time.
That we will come back to committee for approval, and they can give us --
When they're ready to actually sell the bonds, it will come back again, but we did not say we were going to wait till it came back again to add the thirty years. That's in it today.
All right, so it sounds like everybody's on the same wavelength here, and we can now open the roll on item thirty -- sorry, item sixteen. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Next item.
We're holding item number fifteen on the desk. Did you wish to consider that now?
I don't know if he's here yet. Let's do item -- what's the next one? Twenty-five.
Item's number twenty-five.
Mr. Padilla.
There's a card.
Oh, yes, we also have a card on item twenty-five, so let's do that first. First, oh, two cards. We'll open the public hearing and hear from Lucy Weaver and Eduardo Moran. Whichever of you. Ms. Weaver, you go first.
My name is Lucy Weaver, and we're here representing seven-hundred-and-fifty strikers from King City, California, and we're asking for your support in our boycott, and we just thank you for any support that you can give us.
Thank you. Dear board members, my name is Eduardo Moran. I just want to say thank you for your support, and it's a great pleasure for us to be here. Thank you very much, and we are representing seven-hundred-and-fifty strikers from King City. As you know, this has been a long struggle over in King City. Thirteen months is a long, long battle, but we are committed to win this battle with your support, with cities like Los Angeles, San Francisco, Oakland, that they have passed resolutions similar to this one, and thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Padilla. Push the speaker button, please. Thank you. Go.
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. I rise also in support of the item, obviously, but there's an item twenty-five A, an amendment -- amended motion on the desk right now. It was an item waived out of IGR, and so I move to support Senate Resolution Thirty-two, Senate Resolution carried by Senator Solis in the state legislature. Senate resolution carried by Senator Solis in the state legislature, also in support of the workers and their cause on this issue. That is all.
Okay, thank you. So we have item twenty-five before us as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved. Next item. Mr. Hernandez is back, let's go back to item fifteen.
Item fifteen, and I just wanted to rise to ask Mr. Savordich some real quick questions on this one. This is the Harbor Gateway Community Center, is that correct? Is that the community center that is not complete?
This is the one in the TNI area.
Yeah, I just, if you could, what about the one that's not completed? There was one, as you enter the harbor, they were building a community center. Last year, when I went to, we had the Christmas lights at the harbor, as you're entering, there's this community center that was begun construction and it wasn't completed?
No, this isn't that one.
This is not this one. Where is this one exactly? I know it's in the TNI area.
This is, this is on Gardena Boulevard, Mr. Hernandez, and part of the TNI neighborhood and Harbor Gateway. To give you some perspective, on one side of the street of the city of Gardena, on the other side of the street on Gardena Boulevard is the city of Los Angeles in the Harbor Gateway portion. And this was the community that we chose to be our TNI area because their services are very scarce in that area.
Okay. Members of the council, this particular motion that's before us is important for a variety of reasons, but, one, when we're dealing with our TNI funds, a lot of us have not been able to move the monies along. And this one, I think, is one of the projects that's going to move a large portion of money along. And the question I wanted to know, and Claire's here, when is this community center going to open? Uh huh. Because we're approving a large portion of 1.3 million, when will this community center be opening?
Claire Bartels, Director of Targeted Neighborhood Initiative, acting positively on this motion today will allow us to move to place an offer on the acquisition of the property. We'll move into a swift design phase through the Bureau of Engineering, and that will take roughly six months to get to the point where we can implement construction. So we are hoping to actually complete construction within a year from the acquisition.
Within a year. So Mr. Savordich will no longer be the councilman?
But the community will be well-served by that central...
So now, how much are we approving today?
We're not approving a dollar amount, we're approving, allowing CRA to make an offer on the property and to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city departments to design and build it.
And what's the anticipated cost of the center?
The entire anticipated cost is roughly 1.2 million dollars.
1.2 million. And this particular TNI, in the neighborhood, decided to invest their TNI monies into this center?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, the reason I'm asking these questions is the city has had a lot of groundbreakings, many more groundbreakings than ribbon cuttings. And, and the focus has got to be on the ribbon cutting. Because that means we've completed a project. And I say that knowing I have 323 days. And Claire Bartel and I have had a lot of discussions about the TNI funding. I need all of my colleagues to be aware that we have to review how we do these processes, especially when we're working with a city family like CRA, and how we can expedite this work. And what we need to do is have an understanding that we've set a goal of having this community center open on this day, and in order to meet that goal, we got to get these things done in this order. Now, I'm kind of sharing it because every one of these projects, when it's a capital improvement project, should have that kind of a timeframe. And then what it is that each department needs to do to meet that goal. And I'm kind of throwing it out because when I was asking the questions, that's what I was trying to get back. Now I know it's going to cost me 1.3, hopefully it'll cost me less. If it costs a little bit more, we can deal with that. And then knowing when it's going to be done is, I think, a real key.
Agreed. We haven't set the final, we, we aren't able to establish the tight schedule yet. We certainly hope to meet the one-year schedule, but I must say we've made remarkable progress just in the last few months with coming together with the community on the precise plan, identifying a suitable property, and bringing the city family members into this to expedite the entire process.
And I just want to share with Mr. Savordich, I have a project called the Ziegler House that CRA has been overseeing in my district. And the Ziegler House, I started acquiring funding for it in 1992. And we had acquired the property in 1991. And I'm hoping to go to the opening in October of the year 2000. That's been part of the city's problem. And I'm hoping to try to avoid those kinds of issues with this one. Because it's important that a majority of this work get done while you are here, Mr. Savordich.
Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. I think we better do that forthwith so they can get the building open. All right, next item.
Next item is item number twenty-seven.
All right, we have somebody who wishes to be heard on item twenty-seven, Jim Blomquist.
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Jim Blomquist. I'm the Southern California representative of the Sierra Club, and I am here in support of the resolution that you are offering today. I'd like to thank the leadership of Councilman Fuhrer and Councilman Holden for offering this motion. It is one that expands the city's policy passed last year about the Sierra Nevada to a EIS that's being considered by the administration on the Sierra Nevada right now, as well as all national forest roadless lands in the United States. I know that this requires the concurrence of the mayor, but last weekend at the Watts Summertime Festival, we collected a postcard that the mayor signed, which is fully in agreement with the resolution that was passed. It's our hope that the resolution that is before you is amended to include all national forest roadless areas over 1,000 acres. I would hope that that has been done prior to it coming before you, but I'm not sure of that fact. But thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. And the item is now before us. Members of the council, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number thirty.
All right, on item thirty, we also have two people who wish to be heard. First, Mr. James Fleck, and then Mr. Rod Field.
Council members, my name is James Fleck. I'm the legislative analyst for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and I'm here to speak on item number thirty. The first part of item number thirty, which is the bringing into conformity the rent stabilization ordinance in various parts of state law, we are not opposed to. We think it should go forth to committee. There'd be an opportunity for both the landlord and tenant groups to speak to the advantages and disadvantages of the present system and whether or not it should be changed. We are objecting to part number two, which is the retroactive imposition of this as of a week ago, without any hearing, without any evidence, without any findings. We feel that this is simply unjust, that there is no basis to justify a retroactive imposition of this 120-day freeze without having some public findings that there is a crisis of some kind, or that there is some, some basis other than political expediency. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Field. Rod Field, are you here? All right, in that case, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, Madam President. The following problem with our rent stabilization ordinance was just brought to my attention. State law, a provision called the Ellis Act, allows for landlords to withdraw their units from the rental market, which means go out of business or demolish them. And what that means to tenants is obviously devastating because that's a situation, unlike the good cause eviction reasons that exist in our rent control ordinance, that's a reason that had nothing to do with the tenant's behavior. Tenant did nothing wrong, they're just being suddenly displaced with very severe results. Knowledgeable that that was a real problem for tenants. The state legislature, when it passed the Ellis Act, also passed some notice requirements. It said because this displacement is so devastating to tenants who through no fault of their own are being kicked out of their apartments, we're going to provide for notice periods of 120 days for most people, and a year for people who are disabled or senior citizens. But the Ellis Act says local jurisdictions have to affirmatively adopt those notice periods. Well, I just learned that we have never done so. And as a consequence, in the city of Los Angeles, we failed to balance the equation that was balanced by the state legislature in giving these longer notice periods. And in fact, in LA, the notice period's only 30 days, instead of 120 days and one-year periods that state law allows. And other cities, in fact, have done what they should do, which is to adopt those longer notice periods. So what this ordinance would do was bring city law, is bring city law into conformity with what the state law allows on these withdrawals of rental units, apartments, from the market. Provides those notice periods of 120 days or a year, depending upon the status of the tenant. The, I will say, the gentleman, Mr. Fleck, argues that it ought not be retroactive. We consulted with the city attorney, Claudia McHenry, who's here, at great length about this. And while we've been assured it's perfectly legal to make it retroactive to the date it was introduced, I'm fine with amending it to be, to substitute the date August 4th in the ordinance to August 11th, to today's date. And in fact, I'll make that motion to be accommodating, and we'll call it a day. But I think it's an important thing for us to do in light of the fact that tenants are confronted with the potential for being displaced through no fault of their own, and yet the city law isn't yet in conformity with state law. Under this approach, there will be an opportunity for a full hearing, but given our recess and so forth, this would be an interim control ordinance in place temporarily. There'll be that full hearing, and then we'll do what we want to do. So I move unanimous support for this today.
Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, clearly, we try to expedite things, but it causes some major problems in lawsuits. This is an item that should go to committee. I've never known where we've approved an interim control ordinance even for a short period of time without public hearing, public notice. It's going to affect every such housing units in the city of Los Angeles. It's just inappropriate, notwithstanding what the city attorney might say. We have a code enforcement program where we charge a dollar per unit for inspection per year, and we don't inspect all the units. Then it's not a fee for service, it's a tax. And that, we have lost that case in court, and it did, in fact, have the city attorney's support. I said it wouldn't fly, and it has not flown, and we're going to have to pay that retroactively in those cases where we have been wrong. Landlords and tenants should work together fine, but we have a, an ordinance already on the book, rent stabilization ordinance. When you relocate a tenant, you pay them. If they're seniors, you pay them more. There's, some of these projects are in process. You cannot make a law and make it retroactive and have it to apply. They could even do that with Carl Chessman when the governor didn't want to sign the order to execute him. They're saying that law had been in effect when he committed the act, he would have walked after 20, 30 years. But they said, no, we cannot make it retroactive. And never have, and never will. We do have some judges in the audience, Judge Chairman Smith will come before us in a moment. Not that he's going to rule on this case, it is not retroactive. I don't care what the city attorney is saying. Are they here, by the way, right now? Let them come up to the table, and you can hold my time while they answer the question, Mrs., Madam Chair, on retroactivity.
You'd already moved to take the retroactive out.
All right, you'd moved to take the retroactive out. But it's still going to be unlawful because you're not going to have a public hearing. Well, you can respond to it. It's not, it's not, it's not giving public notice for, for an ordinance, a law of this nature. We always send them to committee. So I would say to you that I'm going to vote no. I wish I could do it 15 times to offset your vote, because it's the wrong thing to do. Just not right.
Ms. Mizinkowski.
I rise in support of the motion, and in fact, I think, as we have seen recently in some cases, the city has been behind the times and not had its ordinance updated to reflect what is allowable under state law. And I think, we know we are in a housing crisis, and we know that that housing crisis most seriously impacts our seniors, those with disabilities, and those families with children. This ordinance, to go in effect temporarily while we go through the longer-term hearings, is going to deal with those tenants who now fall through the cracks and literally are able to be ousted from their residence, their homes, their, their housing environment on a 30-day notice. That is essentially unconscionable, I believe. Where we have had cases recently, one in my district, one in Mr. Fuhrer's district, and I think a couple of others, where we have had discretionary authority, we, where we have discretionary authority, have extended notice, have extended assistance to folks who live in these kinds of cases where buildings are going to be demolished for something else. But we have an awful lot of tenants who are falling through the cracks, who are coming through in cases that are not discretionary, don't have our ability to reach in and assist them, and this ordinance does that. It doesn't say that they cannot be ultimately demolished or that the units, or these folks won't ultimately have to leave their units. But it does say that consistent with state law, they are going to be given adequate notice to find those other kind of housing units, hopefully in their same area, probably not at the same cost, but at least so that much of the rest of their lives can continue as normal as we would all want for our own situations. So I think this ordinance makes sense. I think the, the moving the date forward to today, it's only a 60-day notice extension anyway, it's going to be going on under this current law, 60 days plus a 60-day extension, while we have the hearings in effect. So if this catches some of those tenants, some of those people and families who would fall through the cracks over the next 60 days, I think it's truly worth it, and we can have the longer-term hearing, grant hardship exemptions if we like. But this is an ordinance that I think is long overdue, and doing it soon and giving us a 60-day window to act more permanently makes a lot of sense.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, as we speak, we are having an unprecedented change in the housing market in Los Angeles. Folks, apartment owners who had taken throughout the whole recession, section eight vouchers, now are refusing them because they can get more money without having those folks living there. Folks who were not willing to fix up their units are now using fixing up their units as a way to evict, and then have people come back and be able to charge market rates because it was a legal eviction to fix up the units. And on and on and on. There is an assault on affordable housing in this city, not by everybody, I don't ever want to say that. Most actual property owners who have apartments are really fine folks using it as income and providing a service. But the no-good nicks out there are really, unfortunately, taking advantage of the situation. This little change simply will give someone more time to figure out what to do. And I think we should do it today, and I think we should do it immediately.
Mr. Hernandez.
I call for the question.
All right. Mr. Hernandez has called the previous question. The two people remaining to speak have each spoken once. Is there any objection to the previous question?
Yes.
Mr. Holden objects to the previous question. Open the roll on, moving the previous question. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
All right, debate is ended. Let's open the roll on item, where are we here, thirty? Item thirty. At, excuse me, as amended. All right, open the roll on item thirty as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
That is approved.
That item carries over the ordinance until next Friday, the 18th?
That's correct. So for those of you who were thinking of not being here on the 18th, we do need a quorum in order to finally enact this. Yes, sir. Mr. Holden has announced he will not attend in order that there will not be a quorum. Moving right along.
Madam President, you have three specials on the desk, one, two and three.
We have three specials. Yours is, a lot of people want to be heard on that. If you don't mind, I'd like to take the two quick ones.
Before we do that, I'd like to move to reconsider the appointment of Mr. Caruso, because I understand there are more people in the room who want... because I understand there are more people in the room who wanted to be able to vote on it.
Yes, I understand.
It's item 21.
There are more people who want to vote against it. All right, open the roll on whether to reconsider item 21, Mr. Caruso's appointment. Open the roll on reconsideration. I ask for a no vote. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 no's.
The item is now reconsidered. Open the roll on Mr. Caruso's confirmation.
Ask for a no vote.
Those of you who prefer Ted Stein will vote no. Those of you who prefer Mr. Caruso will vote yes. Hey, is that untrue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
5 ayes, 9 no's.
All right, so confirmation is, he has not been confirmed. Mr. Wax.
Be denied.
All right, Mr. Wax has moved affirmatively that confirmation be denied. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 5 no's.
All right, confirmation is denied. Moving right along.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In the interest of trying to deal with item 30 today, I would ask for reconsideration so that Mr. Holden could speak.
Second. You think that'll do it? All right, open the roll on reconsidering item 30. Open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, the item is reconsidered. Push the speaker button, Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden is recognized.
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I'd like to have the city attorney come forward. Would you hold my time as she answers the question? And the question is, they can have an interim control ordinance in his district, and that way it won't stop the projects in my district. I don't want to put them on the shelf, so go ahead.
In our view of the state law, it's our conclusion that, no, that that would not be permissible under the state law, that the state law contemplates that the proposed regulation applied through your entire system of rent regulation, that the city cannot just selectively choose which landlords would be subject to its provisions or which areas of the city it would apply in. That's based on our review of state law.
Do you think it would be legal, then, for someone to introduce and have adopted an interim control ordinance for the purpose of deciding what kind of code changes should be in an area, whether or not it should have any additional demolition permits be granted, et cetera, in one council district? Do you think that would be appropriate?
State law doesn't address that issue. The state law provision we're looking at now is the Ellis Act, deals with the question of cities that have rent regulation and want to provide tenants who are going to be displaced with enhanced notification.
In those cases, tenants would be displaced. When you issue a demolition permit, that's the same thing we're talking about, for the purpose of rebuilding and displacing tenants.
I don't think the state law addresses that type of regulation, that kind of regulation, regulation of, straight-up regulation of demolition permits.
What about zoning, zone changes?
That's a different matter. Those are different matters.
And the state law does not, would not control that in a local level?
No, no. The state law does not.
It doesn't give you authorization to do that? Doesn't authorize it?
The Ellis--
The reason why I raised the point is because I had a, and you were involved in this, interim control ordinance dealing with demolitions of units and also rolling back based on certain zone requirement limitations. And you supported that.
Yes, I did.
So I don't have, understand why the city attorney can say, one hand, you can have it for one district, and the other hand, you can't have it for the district.
Yeah, the ordinances I worked on with your office were building permit moratorium, interim control ordinances. Those arise out of our charter authority. This particular regulation is a little unique. It's based on a provision of state law, Ellis Act, which allows the city expressly to adopt provisions dealing with enhanced notification to tenants who are going to be displaced.
Then for the city attorney's point of view, then, enough time has been given to both sides to speak on this issue with this Rule 16? I mean, it's just unheard of in a Rule 16 before. Or have you approved one like this in Rule 16?
Well, the question of how much notice should be given to the interested parties, I really think is a policy issue for the council as opposed to a legal question.
So it's a policy issue for the council, which means that if the council is wrong, you'll stand behind the fact that they were wrong in terms of the policy being in compliance with state law?
I've never gone into court and said the council was wrong.
Well, you should, and when they are. And you should tell them when they are about to be wrong. And so therefore, they are wrong, I overrule them, and I'm going to vote no. But I tell you what, I'll be here Friday to vote for you.
All right. Mr. Fuhrer. All right. How come Mr. Holden's back up here again? All right, is there any objection to the previous question? Open the roll on the, no, we'll assume the previous question has passed and debate has ended.
I'm not here.
All right, Mr. Holden is not here. At least he will not be here. Go on, just walk out. We'll let you know when it's over.
I never walk out.
Certainly not. All right, run out, see if I care. All right, open the, open the roll on item 30. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is now approved, and as that is approved unanimously, the ordinance will be in effect forthwith. Mr. Holden is, Mr. Holden has returned. All right, what's this? Special 1.
I'm sure that Mr. Holden will be allowed to walk out for office.
He never asks my permission. Well, that's not true. Sometimes he asks permission. All right, wait, 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 hold on. Ladies and gentlemen, sit tight. We're getting there. We have three specials before us. As a number of people have asked to be heard on special 1, and I have no cards on specials 2 and 3, it's my suggestion that we start with, that we do those first, and we'll start with special number 2 when we first need the findings.
Madam President, members, in order for council to consider this motion by Councilman Fuhrer, the finding has to be made pursuant to the provisions of the government code and the rules of the city council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter and that the need for action came to the attention of the city council subsequent to the posting of today's agenda.
All right, open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, the matter is now before us. Mr. Fuhrer.
Madam President, I have an incredibly important thing I have to say, and that is that my name is misspelled on the board.
Yes, it is.
But as a second date, in fact, I can address a special motion to reflect that, but to correct it. The--
It's correct on the motion as well.
Yes, I understand. No, this is, this is a technical amendment to our prior action, Madam President. It's necessary for us to accomplish and to make sure that what the council agreed to do in the Kimball settlement can be effectuated. I urge unanimous support.
All right, open the roll on special number 2. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That's unanimously approved forthwith on that one. Special number 3, Mr. City Attorney.
Madam President, members, again, in order for the council to consider this motion, it's necessary that a finding be made pursuant to the rules of the city council and the provisions of the government code, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's agenda.
All right, open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Open the roll. Can we open the roll? Is the roll not opening? There we go. All right, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, the matter is now before us. Open the roll on special number 3. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is also approved forthwith on that, too. We have now remaining on the agenda, I believe, only special number 1, and I have a number of people who want to be heard, and we have two more presentations, and we still have a quorum, which is very exciting. So we'll move then to special number 1, and Mr. City Attorney, we need you for the findings.
Madam President, members, in order for the council to consider Ms. Goldberg's motion, there needs to be a finding made that under the provisions of the government code and the rules of the city council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this motion and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's council agenda.
Okay, I will move that. All right, open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 no's.
All right, the findings having been met, the matter is now before us, and we have a number of people who wish to be heard. So we'll open the public hearing and call in order Susan Goldberg.
Wait a minute.
Then--
You need 10 votes.
We just had 11.
We just had 11.
On that special 1?
We had 11 votes for the findings.
It's now before us.
And Holden's a no also.
You know, there are three no votes listed on this roll here, and Mr. Holden, you're not, you're not one of them, but even if you are, there are still 10 votes.
There's a quick--
So, now, wait a second, guys. You can't do this. You can't just be here, vote on these things. I announced them, I called them twice.
There was a quick gavel.
Nobody, no, you want me to hit you with a gavel? No, you don't. Come on. No, you don't. You can't do that. This is why we have votes on the findings. About a baseball bat?
Madam Chair, are we voting on you hitting Nate with a gavel?
I'm sorry?
Are we voting on you hitting Nate with a gavel?
I actually own a gavel. It's in my office, but I thought it was more prudent to leave it there. All right. Mr. City Attorney, is it legitimate to have reconsideration of the findings?
Yes. That or I want to be recorded as a no.
All right, all right, Mr. Burnson has moved that we reconsider the vote on the findings.
Was he on the prevailing side, Madam Chair?
Yes, he was. That's why he wants to reconsider. That's also why Mr. Holden wanted to reconsider.
Oh, you--
All right, open the roll on whether to reconsider.
Don't do this.
Now, clear the roll, yes. Open, clear the roll. Open the roll on whether to reconsider the findings that have already been made. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1--
All right, the matter is now before us. Open the roll on the findings, which I will ask the city attorney to state one more time, please.
Before we do that, let me argue with, why I want to--
Yes, I would like you to do that before we vote.
I didn't think it would be necessary, but I guess I was wrong, free speech being so controversial these days. We have been having a serious series of events, and people need to know about them. Thursday night, two young women who were at the convergence center left to go home, were stopped, were taken into custody, were handcuffed. When asked repeatedly what the problem was, they were told, we'll tell you when we get you downtown. They were taken downtown. One was after questioning, released. The other was told that four hours earlier, they had been seen jaywalking and had been given a jaywalking ticket. These two young women were terrified. There was virtually no reason for them to be arrested. If they wanted to issue a four-hour later parking, a jaywalking ticket, they could have done it there. But that's not what's been happening. Officers, unfortunately, have been following home at night in black and white cars for the purpose, in my humble opinion, of intimidation, people who are just working at the convergence center. There has been a removal of all of the, what do you call, mailboxes for 10 blocks in the area of the convention center, unbolted and removed. And we are showing city employees the, what I call reefer madness videotape that we saw in here about the, about what happened allegedly in Seattle and DC. 2,500 officers in full armed regalia are going to be permanently assigned to this convention. There is an atmosphere of intimidation that is unbelievable that is beginning, not anything I've seen since 1968 in Chicago. This little pamphlet here, which is the official document welcoming people, talks to them, conventioneers, not about our restaurants and our attractions and our businesses, but instead about what to do if you're, have been gassed by tear gas on page 16, where the hospitals are on page 12 and 13, where the command control center is on page 2, where the city emergency operations center is, how not to lose your credentials, you won't be allowed back in, where the emergency numbers are, there's only LAPD and LAFD. There is nothing here about what a wonderful city we are, how glad we're out here to have you, and what we are doing is creating a climate of fear. In that context, I am not asking for anything that's controversial. Read the document. The document simply says, we're going to follow constitutional rights of protected speech and assembly.
Jackie, you're, right now, you're arguing that the need to arose, the need to act arose--
Well, yes, because I found out on Thursday that these things have been done--
Okay, fair enough. I just want to focus this on what, on the findings issue, and then assuming the findings are adopted, we'll come back to the substance. All right, on the findings, Mr. Burnson.
I want to--
Yes, you're next.
Yes, members of the council, I appreciate Ms. Goldberg's concern, and we all have concerns about constitutional rights. However, a lot of people, including myself and others, are going to read this document as one that is going to prohibit or inhibit, I won't say prohibit, but inhibit our department's ability to protect the city of Los Angeles. And I think that's the wrong message that we should be sending. We have a convention that's coming here, and believe me, if people obey the law, they needn't be afraid of being persecuted or have their constitutional right-- I'm sorry, you're taking my rights away now, okay? You're so concerned about rights?
Wait, 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 guys, just, Mr. Holden, wait your turn. They'll wait, they'll wait their turn.
Hold my time, would you please?
You wait your turn. This is Mr. Burnson's turn. Go ahead.
I just want to say that I think this is the wrong message. I do support free speech. I do support your right to demonstrate peacefully and not to create problems for the people of Los Angeles. You can shake your head all you want, but I'm telling you how I feel, and I'm telling you that our department has to have the ability to protect the businesses and people of Los Angeles.
Yeah, but how, we're still on the findings.
That's the findings, those are on the findings.
All right.
That's why we should not do this.
All right, Mr. Holden, on the findings.
On the findings, the findings says, we don't deal with people's bail, the city will not seek unusually high level of bail. Somebody's plan to be arrested. And I would say to you, Madam Chair and all, we would not be talking about all this protection and preventative measures if a number of these people who are with us today didn't threaten to come into the community and say what they're going to do and be disruptive. Now, I've got to tell you that, that we cannot tolerate. We got to protect the president, we got to protect the vice president. When they come to town at the convention, they move, remove these barrels, they remove these mailboxes because people can put bombs in them, and they are concerned about that. Now, if we don't, if you don't think you want to protect the president, if you don't think you want to protect the vice president and other important people coming to our community, and the people who live here and work here and their businesses are here, you've got another thought coming. I intend to do that. This matter, we've been debated over and over again, debated over and over again, what you've won, you want in court, and the court's going to show once again, they've been wrong, 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 and given these kinds of liberties to go out and destroy and burn and destroy a city, break their windows. But we put too much effort in rebuilding Los Angeles, and we're not going to have to do it again when you leave.
All right, but this, we're speaking to-- The finding, I hear, I'm holding your time. The findings have to do with whether the need to act arose subsequent to the posting of today's agenda. We are not on the substance of the motion, and we'll never get there unless the findings are adopted.
All right, we don't have to act today, we can act on Tuesday.
Well, that's then, all right, that's to the findings. Ms. Goldberg, on the findings.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask--
Yes, well, I'm trying very hard to make us do that. All right, does anybody else wish to be heard on the findings? All right, open the roll on the findings, and the findings would be that there is a need to act today and the need to act arose subsequent to the posting of today's agenda. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 4 no's.
All right, that is, the findings have been adopted, and we will now take up where we left off a few moments before and have the public hearing, beginning with Susan Goldberg. If you want to get to the end of this, where we adopt it, we should not prolong it. Susan Goldberg, followed by James Lafferty, Muffy Sunday, and then I'll read you some[1735.82] more after that. Go ahead.
... again. Now, someone wanted to leave, but the, the...
Mr. Holden, you lost the vote. Do not impinge on...
The New Frontier has been sitting here since this morning. Why did it have to sit for 10...
You know what, Mr. Holden, when I called, before the quorum was here, would you like to let me answer?
You are wrong on this one.
Yes or no? No, sir, you weren't here, and I was told that you and Mrs. Walters and Mr. Ridley Thomas wanted to present jointly, so I thought as a courtesy to you, I should wait until you showed up.
Special one came in after we were here.
Yes, it did. It's also, it's also council business. Would you mind, you're now impinging on the time of the public? This is, you take that up with Ms. Goldberg. This Ms. Goldberg is now called upon.
Thank you. I was afraid it was going to be another time where something was passed and then changed again as the last time that I was here. I'm glad that the people are getting a chance to speak to this.
Well, speak to it.
To what I'm, to this motion is important because things have actually been happening. People have been being harassed. We wouldn't certainly be spending our time asking for a motion like this. We have a lot of work to do. If we weren't feeling, all of us personally, these young women who were arrested, Mr. Bernson, you said, people, you don't want to restrain the police? The police are arresting people who are doing things like jaywalking and somebody who didn't do anything at all. So, we're not, we're coming here because things are really happening. The city council has an obligation to protect the people of Los Angeles and not just the police department, and the people of Los Angeles are going to be in the streets demonstrating, and we're asking only for protection of our First Amendment rights. And if you can't do that, there's, there's a problem there. We're not asking for special things, we're asking for our First Amendment rights, and it's the people of Los Angeles who are going to be protesting in the streets. Thank you.
Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you. The fact of the matter is that the police in the recent weeks in this city have already violated the Constitution. That's why the national lawyers get on the ACLU within the last 48 hours have had to file two new federal lawsuits, two new federal lawsuits. This isn't just a fear on our part, this is a reaction to reality. The same violations of the Constitution, which still keep people incommunicado in jails in Philadelphia as we speak, are being threatened here in Los Angeles. The police have made it clear that they do not intend to wait until somebody violates the law. They intend to round up the organizers of the protests and preemptorily arrest them. That is unconstitutional. Those 250 lawsuits that we were reading about the other day growing out of ramparts are going to pale in significance if this city follows the way that the city of brotherly love has been behaving with respect to the Constitution. All we are asking, and all this resolution of Councilmember Goldberg seeks, it says nothing that isn't already the law of the land or the law of this city or the law of this state. It is simply asking that this council go on record as saying, "Yes, the law of the state, the land and the city will not be set aside simply because the Democratic Party is coming to town." The President of the United States goes all over the city, Mr. Berns, all over this country, Mr. Bernson or Mr. Holden, and when they do, the Constitution follows them. It doesn't get thrown into the trash can.
Ms., hang on. Muffy Sunday is next, followed by Javier Rodriguez.
I'm just going to ask, I'm going to interrupt him.
Ms. Goldberg.
To ask if we could wait for the presentation for the New Frontier Democratic Club. I didn't realize so many people wanted to speak, or I would have said that earlier. I thought it was going to be one or two people, but I think as a courtesy to people who've been here before 10 o'clock this morning, we should do that.
That would be fine with me, if you all are willing to do that, that's...
But I would ask that people not leave, Mr. Pacheco.
I'd like to point out that our city employees that I was going to recognize have also been waiting since 10 o'clock. Well, it would be nice. All right, Mr. Holden and Mrs. Walters and Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Ridley Thomas was here first for a presentation.
Where are the resolutions? Madam President, members, this is indeed an honor for me because whatever success I've achieved has been primarily responsible for the members of the New Frontier Democratic Club. And I have standing with me two of my fine colleagues, Senator Margaret, Senator, Councilmember Margaret Thomas and Councilwoman Rita Walters, along with other members of the New Frontier Democratic Club. Which was founded during the presidential campaign in 1960. A group of African-American leaders wanted more political involvement to reflect communities' needs. Many of the same issues that prompted the founding of the New Frontier Democratic Club remain today, and that is why the club is a prominent voice in the 1990s politics, and of course, it'll be 2000 and beyond as well. Retired Judge Sherman Smith was the prime force behind the creation of the New Frontier Democratic Club, and he's here with us today. As in my understanding, that President John Kennedy said we need to engage on New Frontiers and cock on New Frontiers. And when Judge Sherman Smith heard that, he says, "Ah, that's the name of the new club, and we should come together and make that happen," which he did. His primary goal is to educate African-American voters and this community to make decisions vital to its political and economic well-being. The New Frontier has the distinction of having more of its members appointed or elected to public office than any other Democratic Club, they say, in the state, but I'll venture to say in the nation. They've been tremendously successful. The New Frontier Democratic Club has consistently played a dominant role in the election of, in many of our community, local, state, and national representatives, including those who are running for president. Present and past membership includes Congressman Julian Dixon, Congressman Maxine Walt, Walters, Mayor Tom Bradley, former Congressman Mervyn Dombley, Judge James Reese, Judge Veronica Simmons-McBeth, and the council members you see standing with me today. I am very, very pleased. I am very, very proud, and I'm very, very thankful of Judge Sherman Smith and the other founders of the New Frontier Democratic Club that made all this political progress for our community's success. And not only did we endorse, did they endorse us, but they endorsed Ruth Galanter, who made us wait.
Who also gave them a lot of money.
Right.
And made it into the bottom of the book.
They also endorsed Pat Russell against another African-American because she was considered to be the best person for the job. Remember that, Sherman Smith? So, they, they just always selected the best qualified candidate to represent us. I want to thank you now, I thank you forever for all the good work you have done, and call on my colleagues, Ms. Walters, Mr. Thomas, for their comment.
Thank you very much, Councilman Holden. I want to add my commendations to New Frontier for their work over these 40 years as well. They have plowed new ground, they have been consistent in their efforts to support candidates, to support candidates from the African-American community as well as other communities, and to have their voices heard. Years ago, when campaigns still involved licking and sticking, these people that you see before you were the ones who licked and who stuck. So, they have been active in political fields, but they've also been active in their chosen occupations. Dr. Owen Knox here was an early supporter of reform in the Los Angeles Unified School District, going all the way back to the early 60s. He has consistently, all these 40 years, fought for that and is still fighting for that. He's a retired Assistant Superintendent, and I should say with honors, he was an outstanding educator, and I could say that of every person standing here before you today. They have been outstanding people in their chosen fields, they've been outstanding in their neighborhoods, and they've come together in the New Frontier Democratic Club to ensure that we get outstanding representation in office.
Madam President, members of the council, Mr. Holden, Mrs. Walters, I'm delighted to acknowledge the longstanding commitment and support of New Frontier. Suffice it to say, there are frontiers yet to be conquered, and these are persons whose resolve has not been significantly diminished. They are here today to send a message that we are still a force with which to be reckoned, and we will do all that we can to make sure that democracy does indeed live in the city of Los Angeles and beyond, and to make ourselves known as a part of what makes this city and this region a much better reason. We thank you and commend you.
So, to the finder, Judge Sherman Smith will present the certificate. Congratulations. Actually, the mayor decided that he would preempt Mark Reader and myself, and he had all of these resolutions and certificates made up. He's not here today, but sends his best wishes and congratulations for 40 years of success. Sherman Smith?
Sherman.
I've got to stand on my good side.
Thank you. To the President and the council members, New Frontier Democratic Club, given its longevity, has solidly set its footprint in the sands of time. Without interruption, New Frontier, having been conceived during the 1960 Democratic Convention here in Los Angeles, has maintained itself and stayed the course for 40 years. For this, I commend, first, the 19 founders, especially Judge Sherman Smith Sr. for his vision. Secondly, I thank the members who have remained dedicated to the ongoing progress of this great club. Many great leaders have emerged from the New Frontier Democratic Club. For example, Congressman Julian C. Dixon, one of the earliest club presidents. And here with us today also is John Freysen, who is a past president and now Deputy Director of the DNC, Commission, Community Relations, and also a past president of New Frontier. And I want to personally and collectively thank our council members, Mark Wrigley Thomas, Rita Walters, and Nate Holden, all of whom are members of New Frontier Democratic Club. We also express our appreciation to Mayor Richard Reardon and the entire city council for recognizing our founders and the New Frontier Democratic Club. It is with great pride that I accept this recognition on behalf of the New Frontier Democratic Club and again say thank you. We look forward for your continuing support of our efforts to encourage participation in the democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., don't leave yet. Mr. Fuhr wants to say something.
President, I just wanted to underscore something that Ms. Walters said. You know, the New Frontier Democratic Club has not only been particularly important in the African-American community, but as Rita mentioned, you have really had a pioneering role for all of us in the city of Los Angeles, and I think that was, those were remarks that deserve to be underscored. Congratulations for another 40 years and beyond. Good luck.
Thank you. If I may add one more footnote, one of the founders who is no longer with us, Milton Wood, I would be remiss if I did not mention him. And his wife is here and still active with the club. His daughter is our own Debbie Wood Dorsey, who works for the CLA in Washington.
Thank you, colleagues, and our congratulations to New Frontier. The chair recognizes Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter for a presentation. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate everybody's indulgence, especially Ms. Goldberg and all of those who are waiting to be heard on the... on special number one. I'm here this morning, the reason I wanted to do this this morning is that it's still before the convention, and I wanted you to join me in congratulating the Convention Center's recycling program. Sometime back, as we were instituting our own city recycling program, we, and each time something came up about the Convention Center, somebody would say, "Well, do they recycle over there?" And the answer is that they now do recycle over there, and they have been awarded a number of prizes and recognitions for the state-of-the-art recycling program that we now have in place at the Convention Center all year long, and which will be used also at the Staples Center during the upcoming Democratic National Convention. So, I want to first recognize everybody from General Services who's been important in this, and also our LA Convention Center Recycling Coordinator. First of all, John Mukri, the newly confirmed, now permanent general manager of General Services, who isn't here, but that's okay, he hasn't been here as long as these other people have. Melody McCormick, who is our General Services Recycling Coordinator. Leslie Lukas is the Recycling Coordinator for the Convention Center Program, set it up, makes it run. We have George Rakus from the, who's the general manager of the Convention Center, and there's more people here, Tony DeClu and...
Sheila Gonzalez.
And Sheila Gonzalez. Thank you. The materials have been recycled from over 300 events in the last year, and to date, the recycling program has already generated over 650 tons of diversion material, which means the stuff that didn't go into the landfill. This is an increase of nine times the previous recycling rate at the Convention Center. I really appreciate everybody's attention here. Thank you. Nine times the previous recycling rate at the Convention Center. We're on our way for 10, but we're at nine at the moment. They've also donated six tons of reusable material to the LA Children's Museum and the Los Angeles Unified School District, which would otherwise have had to go out and try to find materials, or wouldn't have gotten them in the first place. At the Convention Center, they recycle beverage containers, cardboard, paper, and carpet. They take wood and seal, and steel from the sets and take those to a materials recycling facility, so they still get recycled. There's only one other convention center in the country that has a similar program, and that's the one in San Francisco, that, our program, our program, yes, recently received an award for the Best Business Waste Reduction Program from the California Resource and Recovery Association, and I think they deserve a lot of congratulations and encouragement to keep up the good work, and I wanted you to know that they will be on the job next week. So, I'm going to first introduce Melody McCormick, and then I want to present to you all a congratulatory certificate, and maybe we want to hear from Leslie as well. That's up to you.
Sure. Before I discuss the DNC, I also want to add that an even more important award was bestowed at the CRRA Awards two weeks ago, and that award was to Council President Ruth Galanter. She was presented with the Recycler of the Year Award by CRRA for her leadership in various recycling causes throughout the years, and we who attended were most honored to be in her company that evening. As you know, the DNC is taking place at two venues downtown, the LA Convention Center and the Staples Center. The Convention Center Program, headed up here by Leslie Lukas, will be in full swing, devoting all possible materials. The DNC has also asked that we provide recycling bins for paper in those areas alongside the beverage container bins, and so I congratulate Leslie for putting that program together at the last minute. And LACC will also be providing recycling services at the Gil Lindsay Plaza. Staples has its own existing recycling program where they take their materials to a material recovery facility. Their recycling rate's about 65 percent, and that's an excellent rate. We recommended that Staples place signage on all their waste bins to let the delegates know that any items they place in those bins will be sorted and recycled, and we did see examples of that signage a couple of weeks ago at a press conference. All unused consumable food from both the Aramark and Levy Managed Dining Facilities will be given to local missions to help feed the homeless. And we had originally contacted both the DNC and LA 2000 Committee to offer the services of our special events recycling crew, so they'll be managing paper, cardboard, and beverage container recycling at all the median transportation sites in the lots surrounding Staples as well. We'll also be recycling at both the LAPD and LA SO Command Stations, and also recycling services at the parties, including the big volunteer appreciation party that will be held at the Los Angeles Zoo on Friday evening. Leslie, anything to add to that? A program like this takes a lot of effort from various groups, so I wanted to thank the council for allowing us to come today, and also to the...
the council for allowing us to come today, and also to the management of the convention center, George Rakis, and General Services Melody and Tony for helping make this program successful, as well as Councilmember Ruth Galanter. She's been very supportive to make these types of recycling programs successful, so thank you.
Congratulations to all of you, who, I think, Leslie, you're probably the person who ought to get this thing. This is to the Los Angeles -- and George, the Los Angeles Convention Center and Department of General Services both. Congratulations on your joint partnership in establishing a comprehensive recycling program for the Los Angeles Convention Center, and we have many encores picked out for you.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam President. The chair recognizes Councilman Padilla for a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I know the meeting's going quick, so we'll try to keep this presentation brief, but I do want to call up a couple of my colleagues, Councilmember Goldberg, Hernandez, and Pacheco to join me. I want to formally recognize a group of engineers and others who worked on a pretty historic project recently here in the city of Los Angeles. The Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering was working on a project to restore, preserve, and document some of the historic bridges within our city limits, and they total 15, and they will now be part of the National Archives in the Library of Congress. And although there's no bridges in my district, I'm an engineer by training and sympathized and felt honored by the work done by the engineers on the team, and point to my district and the Pecuauma Wash specifically as a feeder into the Los Angeles River. So you can say, if there was no Pecuauma Wash, we might not need some of these bridges, and so that's how we have a role here. But really, the partnership was one between the Los Angeles River Bridges Recording Project of the National Park Service, the Historic American Engineering Record Program that the Bureau coordinated. They documented 12 river and three other historic bridges in the city, which also recently underwent some preservation and seismic retrofit work. Since mid-May, the team of five architects, three architectural historians, and a photographer conducted research and compiled the data on the historic bridges. And amongst the bridges on the project were the North Broadway, North Spring Street, First Street, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, and Seventh Street Viaducts, as well as the North Main Street Bridge, the Cisa Chavez Avenue Bridge, Olympic and Washington Boulevard Bridges, and the Fourth Street Bridge over Lorena, the Glendale Hyperion Bridge, the Fletcher Drive Bridge, the Franklin Avenue Bridge, and the Sunset Boulevard Bridge. Certainly a lot of work. And in researching and documenting the project, the team reviewed historic prints and drawings of the projects, interviewed a lot of city staff to gain pertinent details, and certainly took photos to depict the various features and unique elements of the bridges and their surroundings. And so I'd first like to call up my colleagues to see if they'd like to say a few words before calling up some of the team members. Mr. Hernandez?
You know, members of the council, I just asked, "Where's my bridge?", and it's the Buena Vista Bridge. For those of you who don't know, it's the Broadway Bridge, it's better known, hooking the communities of Chinatown and Lincoln Heights, and basically a gateway to downtown LA from what we call the north in my district. I want to thank the engineers because I know that this was a project that preserved the character of the bridge, one of the oldest bridges in the city, if not the oldest. It was a substantial investment, and it's now part of a national archive. And it kind of stood as a demonstration project, but not only did we preserve the bridge, we've made it better. It has -- and again, it's called the Buena Vista Bridge historically. I invite you all to go look at the sights from the bridge because it has areas for you to get out of your car, look at the bridge, and look at the areas around it. It's over the LA Bridge, and I need to thank all the engineers for their work. And again, when we talk about the city family, sometimes we don't recognize the expertise that we have when they're able to work together. It makes a tremendous difference. And again, bridges were created to bring communities together, and city employees, I think, were created to make sure that happens. So again, I want to thank the engineers for their work.
Madam President, Madam President, let me just add -- oh, I thought you were done. I'm sorry. I just want to add that as a person who drives across a couple of those bridges almost every day, that we're really glad to have them back. They look beautiful, and they are really a part of the jewels of the city. Thank you very much.
Madam President, colleagues, obviously, as the representative from the east side, who is separated from downtown by the Los Angeles River, our relationship with downtown in Los Angeles only exists because of the bridges and the ability to get people from both sides to congregate and use downtown. So I do also want to thank all of the city engineers and city staff for working so hard in reinforcing, reconstructing, and rehabilitating all of our bridges and keeping them in their true form and their true style. And for those of you who read Los Angeles Magazine, contrary to popular belief, the east side of Los Angeles is east of the LA River and not the communities that they have identified around Silver Lake and Los Feliz. But as I say, I'm very proud to represent the east side, and because of these bridges, we have a good relationship with the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And us engineers often get teased for being pretty square, being sometimes nerdy, and not contributing much to art or imagination, but I think this project is a great example that although the work is technical, although the work is scientific, it does much to contribute to the art, to the culture, to the pride, and the passion that we have in the city of Los Angeles. And to speak on behalf of the team, I'd like to first call up Chief Deputy City Engineer, Brad Smith.
It's really a pleasure to step up to this podium after having been introduced by another engineer. I just want to shake your hands on that basis, separate from my councilman. It's a nice change. Maybe some encouragement there for the Democratic Club for looking for some new members. It's really a pleasure being here today. It was a joy to work with this team of experts that came to us from the National Park Service to do this. You know, this is quite a day of recycling. We just heard a recycling award for activities from the convention center. What this program really about was recycling the historic resources in bridges. That's a resource also, and something that needed to be recycled, that's just what was done, and it was done in a way that really preserved the historical significance of these bridges, and that was the reason for the hair team being here. We were really proud to do the work originally and to work with them in this documentation, and we look forward to delivering more of these kind of jobs with the bond funds that are voted by the people of the city of Los Angeles. It's important to remember that it was bond funds that did this, so we'll deliver on those future projects also as we did in this one. Again, thank you very much for this recognition. It's a good day to be here. I'll cut it short, I know you've got more business to do today. Thank you very much.
For also just a few words, Mr. Eric Delany from the Historic Engineering Record.
Madam Chairman, very briefly, I'm representing the National Park Service as the head of the Historic American Engineering Record, and the eight student architects, engineers, and historians that have been so fortunate is to have 12 weeks of experience in the city of angels is a nice thing to do. This is our third project in Los Angeles. We started out with the Colorado Aqueduct, your number one major water supply system, second major water supply system after the Los Angeles. Thank you, Tom. Last year, we did the Royal Seco Parkway, and this year, we're doing the 15 Merrill Butler Bridges. In addition to recognizing the work of Merrill Butler 80-some-odd years ago, the project is also documenting the seismic retrofit, the contemporary engineering that's ongoing that the city engineers, Clark Robinson, Vidalie Troyan, and his staff has done. These materials will become part of the national collection at the Library of Congress, where for the next 500 years, they'll be available for the people of the United States on the remarkable engineering that exists here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. We unfortunately didn't have somebody here, but an important part of the team was the Friends of the Los Angeles River, so we want to acknowledge their participation as well. And last, but certainly not least, the city of Los Angeles, the very own, now with the Department of Water and Power, Mr. Tom Labange, whose ancestors, I gotta add a little bit of history and trivia here, if I understand correctly, at one time lived at 200 North
-- 210 North Maine.
210 North Maine, an address very near a very famous address today.
Thank you, councilmen, council members, Madam President. I started this program several years ago with the great Clark Robbins when I worked for the mayor. This is a wonderful thing that they've done to put for the National Register. On behalf of all the people who love the bridges in Los Angeles, I have nice mementos for each of the students and all the engineers of these great bridges. And the best bridge is that one runs out of John Farrell's district, the Great Hyperion Bridge. Thank you very much. 218 years ago, 44 people founded this great city on the east side of the Los Angeles River because there was no bridges. Now we have bridges, and we bring people together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. We'll figure out a good encore for you guys, too. All right, I believe we are now ready to go back to special one, and you want to pick up where we left off?
Yes. President, members of the council, the remaining speakers have agreed to just say "me too" to the previous speaker so that we can have our debate in the interest of time.
Do you want me to call them up one by one, or shall I just make all the cards part of the record?
No, I think they'll just acknowledge that their names should be made a part of the record.
All right.
And that they hope that we will vote on this as soon as possible.
There's somebody there saying, "No, he wants to speak."
I don't think so. Okay. What?
Well, since it's been modified.
Well, it hasn't been modified yet. All right. There are really going to be two proposals, as I understand it. One proposal is the original one, and one says that we should only take the last paragraph and move that the -- declare that the city will not attempt to directly or indirectly imp -- pardon me, will not attempt to impinge on the exercise of constitutional rights of demonstrators, and that demonstrators during the DNC will be afforded their full rights by the police department, period. That's the alternative, I'm not going to move it, because I hope that we will pass the original language, and here's why. It's important for us to assert that there are rights to be unpopular. You don't need First Amendment rights if you're doing something that everybody agrees with. You actually only need those rights when they are unpopular ideas. I want to just mention two things. First of all, everything in the motion as it's originally stated is already required by law, so I'm only asking you to reaffirm what is already required by city law, state law, and federal constitutional law. Secondly, I think it's an important thing for the elected officials to say on the eve of a historic and historic event, second convention that we've had in a very long time, since the 1960 convention, that we expect that the show and tell at the Democratic National Convention and what takes place outside is a demonstration to the world of the orderly transition of power in the largest democracy in the world, and that includes people who do not agree with what's going inside that convention hall, and that's part of the democratic process. But finally, I have to tell you that I am very concerned about the environment that is out there right now, and I think our making this statement says something about that concern. We have right now a situation in which people really are being intimidated absolutely on a daily basis because they are involved in planning demonstrations. We right now, on a daily basis, actually have people who have been taunted by members of the department saying, "We'll see you, we'll get you, we're coming for you." And that should just be something that we say we don't want to have happen. We should say that to the leadership of the department. If you were to take the statements of Mayor Reardon and run them side by side with the statements of Richard Day Bailey, Sr. in '68, they would actually look like they were reading the same script. It's extraordinarily interesting, but it's factually accurate. All in all, what I'm trying to ask you to do is to simply say that we affirm as city-elected officials that our department will do what it is supposed to do in protecting the constitutional rights of the unpopular, and for some people, even the undesirable, but they still are people in this city, and they have the right to be treated fairly, and that punishment if crimes are committed comes after a trial and not before. That's all we're asking.
Okay. Mr. Savornich.
I guess if I wanted to indict the Los Angeles Police Department, I would vote for the original motion. If I wanted to support the First Amendment and constitutional free speech, I would support the substitute motion.
Well, someone hasn't -- no one's moved it yet.
I'm moving the substitute motion. The substitute motion is the last paragraph as modified, which would read, "I move that the city council declare that the city of Los Angeles will not attempt to directly impinge on the exercise of the constitutional rights by demonstrators during the Democratic National Convention, and that demonstrators during the DNC will be afforded their full rights by the police department." That's my motion. I'm not willing --
Excuse me, Rudy, if I may on your time.
Yes.
Well, maybe I can -- maybe he'll allow me to make a suggestion here.
Between you guys.
Go ahead, Mr. Burnson.
Okay, I would suggest there's some language in the first paragraph, in the second paragraph, and I would suggest that rather than use all of that, I would suggest the following language. Either the ACLU or questions have been raised as to the exercise of constitutional rights during the DNC. And then we go into the final paragraph because that, you know --
That would be fine, and I'll accept that.
Would that be fine? Because I think, I just want to make -- I don't want to take your time because I'm next, but I would suggest that language.
Well, I'm sure you'll give me some of yours, Mr. Burnson. And so I'm willing to reach a compromise and support that because, of course, we want to send positive messages out for the next week, but I most certainly at this time do not want to hamstring our Los Angeles Police Department, but most certainly, as I previously mentioned, I do not want to indict them on the eve of what should be a very positive week for the city of Los Angeles. So I would like to move my substitute motion, and then I think we have reached a happy compromise where both those who wish to exercise their First Amendment rights can do so, and also the Los Angeles Police Department, if they have to, will keep peace on our streets and in our city for those who wish to carry out their protest in a violent rather than a peaceful manner.
All right. And just for clarification, does your substitute motion, Rudy?
What was that?
Your substitute motion includes the language that Mr. Burnson suggested?
Yes, it did. I accepted that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Mr. Burnson.
Let me just say, I think that I don't want anybody to get the message that we don't -- we want, we're trying to repress anybody's right to demonstrate and make your views known. We just feel that it is important that we start out with a positive note rather than negative vote, and I just, I think the police department has a very difficult problem to deal with, probably not because of the people who want to do so legally, like yourselves. Unfortunately, there are others who would cast a shadow upon legitimate, law-abiding people's ability to make their point of view known, and that's what we have to recognize. So I think that all of us, whether we agree with your views or not agree with your views, we certainly respect and would fight for your ability to make them public, and I want you to understand that. But I think that we need to be positive, and we, at this time, I'm also saying publicly that I expect our police department to abide by the rules and not to take away the right of legitimate people to protest in a legal manner. We expect that of our department, and by us amending Mrs. Goldberg's motion, and I say that because she's been through some of this stuff, and we all know that, but we expect that the rules will be kept and you will, your constitutional rights will be expected, and we're making that statement today, even though it's not in the form that you originally came here for. So I just want that understood, and I hope that we can come away from here with the unanimous vote of this council that says that -- vote of this council that says that rights shall be respected, and we hope that we have a peaceful means of doing so, and that we do not have to have any confrontation with our Police Department. We don't want to tie their hands, we don't want to indict them, but neither do we want to take your rights away. So I hope I make that clear, and I hope we come away from this with the unanimous vote.
Mr. Hernandez.
Well, members of the council, I had it my way, I'd be asking everybody to just take a deep breath and try and envision what it is that we'd like to see. And I'd like to see a very successful convention in Los Angeles. I'd like the demonstrators to be able to express themselves in a way where their statements are heard and taken into account in terms of developing policy for this country. There's importance to that process that has to be recognized. Instead, what I see is the visions that are being displayed by the media and the actions that are being taken. Basically, a lot of distrust. Nobody knows what's going to happen. And I think that we kind of feel that tension. And if we're feeling it, I know Angelenos are feeling it. And it's hot outside. It's hot outside. None of us want to see what we've already seen back in 1992. None of us want to see what I saw when I was a college student back in 1970 during the Chicano mortar jumps. But it happened. And the realities are, it could happen again. When I saw the motion in front of me, I tried to ask myself, "What does it mean?" And what it doesn't, what it means is, if there have been some abuses of people's rights recently, that is not acceptable. That is not acceptable. And we shouldn't accept it. At the same time, we got to recognize that there's a difficult task for our Police Department, not only in regards to the people who are in this room today, in regards to the potential actions that someone from another country might take. And so the reality is, there's a lot of tension out there, and how we work together is the real question. I don't have a problem with either motion. I say that upfront, because all it is, is reaffirming that we will abide by the constitutional rights of everybody. I have no intentions of condemning the Police Department, because I believe that the department today understands clearly its importance of developing its credibility. And I am a past demonstrator, and I understand that the demonstrators want to get their statement out, and people who want to voice and exercise their constitutional rights have that right in this country. I've had the experience of witnessing enough elections in foreign countries to understand the tension that goes around elections. And the sadness today is that I'm feeling that tension in our, my own country. So I just kind of wanted to ask everybody to kind of take a deep breath, not react, look what's before us. We're not being asked to do anything that's unconstitutional and that's wrong. And hopefully, we can get through today and start working on tomorrow.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
All right, let me just inform you that the remaining two speakers listed here are Mr. Holden and Ms. Goldberg, and Mr. Holden insists that he has not yet talked on the item, so. And you would like to close. Well, all right, well, this is, we're looking at six minutes here, so. Do you want to, you want to take a vote on the previous question anyway? It's all right with me.
I'll defer to the chair.
I think you probably should just hold it. We'll put you back up on here, and you can try again. Mr. Holden.
I'd like to hear from the Police Department. We have not heard from them yet. I think they're here. On the motion. Step right up.
Well, Mr. Holden, why don't you ask them a specific question? Because this is now the time for council debate, and I'm sure they will be happy to answer any of your questions.
No, the question's on the motion. They haven't had a chance to speak on this. They've been accused...
No, we've closed the public hearing.
No, this is not a public hearing, Madam. This is not public.
All right, so ask them a question, and they'll be happy to talk. I see a city attorney approaching as well.
Oh, how could you be so obviously biased? And the city attorney should have a right to express, I mean, the Police Department...
Mr. Holden, I'm offering them, you're offering them your time. Ask them a question, so they can talk.
My question is, you heard some of the complaints against the Police Department, and I would, regarding being detained, regarding being stalking, and people crossing streets and being cited unfairly. Do you want to respond to that, and what you think it's like to occur once the convention starts?
With respect to...
You're all holding my time on the question, aren't you, Madam?
Certainly, Mr. Holden. I wouldn't want to deprive you of another 20 minutes.
Well, it's kicking away.
There you go.
As to the first part of your question, Mr. Holden, I can't speak to those issues. I'm the planner in the overall city's security planning process, and I cannot speak to the issues that have occurred in the Westlake District of the city. With respect to the second part of your question, I think that the position of the department is more, most accurately captured in the last paragraph of the motion, that indicates that the department will respect the rights and the laws of the United States and the State of California.
I've been informed about the people who've been detained in jail, or people who don't give any identification, won't give their names, and so they're being retained. Fairness works on both sides. We put an awesome burden on the Police Department. We praise them when they put their lives on the line as a shootout in the valley. Everybody's saying, "Let's praise the LAPD." You bring them down here every day. I've seen Ms. Chick bring them down, Mr. Fur bring them down, and once in a while, you bring them down also, Madam Chair. And you praise the Police Department for a job well done. And they would stage a situation, and that's what's happening right now. You're staging a situation whereby they can be put under attack as well, no matter how they, how much they want to comply by the Constitution, and they ought to do that. But, you know, they're human also. And when someone violates the law, they can be expected to be arrested. And when you arrest them, you can't say, "Well, you violated my rights." They broke the law. The guys in the shootout in the valley broke the law, and they got, they died for it. Okay? I know you're being sued. And I tell you right now, you can raise your hand all you want. You see what I mean? You want all, you want it on your side and your side only. You want to destroy, tear up, and then go home, free back to your middle class and upper-middle-class families. And that's where most of you are from in the first place. You know, you want to change the government? Do it at the ballot. That's what the elections are for. You're not shut out. You can express your point of view anytime you choose to do so. But that's not what you want. You want to be disruptive and destroy, and we're not going to permit it. And I urge the police to enforce the law.
Ms. Goldberg to close. Interesting comments made exactly about the civil rights movement that I was a part of in the '60s, made about the anti-war movement in the '60s, made by, about Cesar Chavez and the farm workers. It seems like everybody's trying to destroy, but it's actually moving this country forward when people actually raise their voices. I would just ask that if you're going to change it on the last one that you say the City of Los Angeles will not attempt to impinge and leave out directly or indirectly, because you do not want to leave it out there...
Right.
...that you want people to be indirectly violating anybody's rights. So if you're going to take it out, take the whole phrase out. I would still urge that we do the original one, because I think it's important to say what it is we want to have done. And what we want to have done is, is that we allow, if people are arrested, for the courts to be the decider of guilt and innocence, and for the courts to be the decider of how people are punished if they are found guilty. This is, all this is. There is nothing here that, which is not the policy of the Police Department already. And I am simply saying we should reaffirm the policies of the Police Department already and say that it is the elected officials of this city who would like to see them follow their own policies. Thank you.
Well, that was supposed to be to close, Mr. Savornich.
I would be happy in my substitute motion to remove the word "directly" also.
All right, so, okay. Yes, we're, we're all, we're all clear on that. All right, the first motion, that closes debate. The first motion will be on whether to substitute. So the original motion is Ms. Goldberg's motion. That's the whole text. The substitute motion is the last paragraph as amended, and it had an introductory thing that Mr. Burnson had put in as well.
Ask for an "aye" vote.
Yes, what is your point of order?
Is it possible for us to vote on the original text first?
No, first we vote on whether to, here's how it works. Wait, hold on, hold on.
That'll vote on the substitute.
Wait, 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 wait. Let me explain. Here's how we do this. First, we're going to, we closed the public hearing. The first thing we're going to do is vote on whether to substitute. If the substitution passes, if the motion to substitute passes, we will vote on the substitute motion. If the motion to substitute does not pass, we will vote on the original motion. If that does not pass, if it passes, it's done. If that does not pass, someone can introduce a new motion, which just by coincidence may sound awfully like the substitute motion we didn't substitute. Okay? So the first motion, everybody with me? The first motion is whether to substitute.
Ask for no vote.
Okay. Open the roll on whether to substitute.
No vote.
Everybody in there see, everybody's done their thing? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.
All right, so that substitute was, the motion to substitute was approved. We now have a vote on the substitute motion.
Ask for an "aye" vote.
Open the roll on the substitute motion.
Ask for no vote.
Open the roll on the substitute motion. What's the matter?
"Aye" vote.
Okay, everybody done their thing here?
No vote on the substitute.
All right, close, you ready? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, four noes.
All right, that was approved.
Madam Chairman, I think it would be useful for it to be unanimous, and I would move that those of us who voted "no" be permitted to change our votes to "aye" if we care to do so, and "aye" so care to do.
All right, let's, let's revote it then, on, on that basis, so we have a record. Open the roll on the substitute. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, so that's unanimously approved, and we'll send that forthwith. And I believe that completes the agenda. We are entering everybody's name who appeared as a part of the public record. Yes, thank you. We're moving on with the rest of our agenda now. What do we have?
Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
All right, public comment on items not on today's agenda. Mr. Richard Robinson and Nico and Theo Millenopoulos. Mr. Robinson, thank you. We heard from you. All right, can you guys stop yelling and let Mr. Robinson have the microphone?
Madam President, members of council, because I do not see honesty, compassion, or intelligence in the two major party candidates for president, I'm going to vote for Ralph Nader.
Well, we all make mistakes, what can I tell you?
Madam President, I ask Ralph his position on automobile safety. I feel comfortable with not only his honesty and compassion, but also with his, with his Ralph Nader for president. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The Millenopoulos brothers.
We are Nico and Theo Millenopoulos and 13-years-old co-founders of Kids Voice L.A.
A year ago yesterday, we watched in horror as kids were gunned down in their summer camp at the North Valley Jewish Community Center in Granada Hills. Even as horrible as this event was, some positive things have occurred as a result of the shooting, including...
The Million Mile March, which occurred across America last Mother's Day, the Unity Garden at the Jewish Community Center, which was created to honor the community's support of the crisis, the post office in Chino Hills, which was named after Joseph Alito, and most importantly, the Los Angeles Board of County Supervisors Initiative, which bans the sale of guns and ammunition on county property.
We are here today to remind you that in the past year, since the Jewish Community Center shooting, at least 10 more Black and Hispanic children have been shot to death in Los Angeles, including a two-year-old, two-year-old girl and a seven-year-old girl. In 1998, 53 of kids were shot in our city, all but one of these kids were Black and Hispanic kids. The media barely covered their untimely deaths. We are counting on you, our city council members, to remember all the kids in L.A. by voting "yes" on the initiative to ban the sale of bullets in Los Angeles, which will be coming before you the next, the next month.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period. Next item.
Motion's for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Councilmember's request for excuse from council. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused on August 11th to leave at 11:00. This requires a motion.
Well, in view of the fact that it's now August 11th at quarter to 1:00, I don't know that she's still here. I don't know that we actually need to do that one.
Put that to the side. Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on Friday, September 15th for city businesses meets policy.
We missed you there, September 15th?
Yes.
All right, so ordered.
Councilmember Savornich requests to be excused on Wednesday, September 6th for personal businesses meets policy.
All right, we'll let him do that, too.
Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused on November 7th, 14th, and 15th for personal business, this meets policy.
All right, she is excused.
Councilmember Savornich requests to be excused on September 13th, 20th, and 27th, October 11th, 18th, and 25th, and for city business, this meets policy.
Goodness, well, have a nice trip.
Councilmember Goldberg.
That's ordered. Yeah, I'm sure. Well, that's what I mean, have a nice trip. Bring your passport.
Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused on October 10th to leave at 11:15. This meets policy for city business.
All right, that will be, she will be excused.
And Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on September 15th, September 22nd, October 6th to leave at 11:30. This is for city business and meets policy.
All right, then we will approve those as well.
The desk is clear.
All right, do we have any adjourning motions? We do. Would everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I request that we adjourn in memory of Kelly Kathleen Milligan, daughter of the operator at the Hanson Dammy Question Center, Eddie Milligan. But she herself was a person in her own right, vice president of the Hanson Dammy Question Center, grew up in Arcadia and attended Arcadia High School. She was a six-time world champion of showing quarter horses and was the West Coast Youth Champion for seven years in a row. She was part of the Milligan family and the Northeast San Fernando Valley family, and she will be sorely missed.
Ms. Goldberg, you said you had one?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we close in memory of Jose Santana, a senior accountant with the El Pueblo Authority. On Monday at 4:00 a.m., Mr. Santana's son Jeremiah Santana was driving an older model Chevrolet van on Highway 138 when a vehicle, when the vehicle veered to the right and overturned. Mr. Santana was sitting behind the driver's seat, unfortunately without a seatbelt, and was killed. His wife, Myrna, was sitting in the front passenger seat, escaped with only minor injuries. A preliminary investigation by the CHP unfortunately revealed the driver may have fallen asleep at the wheel. Mr. Santana was a senior accountant at El Pueblo and worked with the CLA's office on lease rate, rate issues at El Pueblo. He was fondly called Jim Santana. His fellow city employees, family, and all the rest of us will miss him dearly.
Mr. Hernandez is a co-president. Anybody else call the roll? What's the matter?
I respectfully request that, I don't have a adjournment motion, but may I request to be excused on the 13th and 15th of September? I know you'd like to see me take a little longer.
We're finding out if it meets city policy here.
Can I make an amendment to that motion?
Yeah. All right. All right, we'll excuse Mr. Holden on those states.
Call the roll, please.
Nate, we love you, Nate. But take a little longer.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Have a nice weekend.